Good evening, welcome to the January twenty-second Lakeville City Council Work Session. If you'd join me in a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I think the next thing is citizens' comments. Is there any citizens' comments? Look like it, okay. We'll move on to item three A, which is the legislative roundtable, and our kind of our legislative priorities. And I'll highlight a couple of things for folks, but if we wanna, if you're here for that, Jeff, if you guys just want to introduce yourselves, some of those from the staff might, come on.
Yes. Last chair.
So I'll, we'll start with Jeff and kind of just.
I am Jeff Woody. I'm a state representative for fifty-seven B here in Lakeville.
I'm Mary Liz Holberg, Dakota County Commissioner for most of Lakeville.
Zach Duckworth, District Fifty-seven.
Wendy Wolf, that council.
Bill Drosty, Dakota County Commissioner, District Four, and the piece that Mary Liz does not have, I, life staff piece, I should say.
Allison from Congressman Craig's offices.
Allison Craig, Congresswoman Craig, thanks.
So we kind of do this every year. We really appreciate the opportunity to kind of chat about some of the city priorities. We had a discussion in December, or should be November, and adopted some of these, and they're pretty similar to last year. Other than we made a few changes in some areas, but nothing out there other than, I think at the end of the day, we default on local control when it comes to any of the big issues that are happening at Capitol, as you can probably imagine. Some of the things that will continue to be a key focus for us, obviously is being able to fund the regional public safety training facility, which we're actually talking about tonight. County Road Fifty and Thirty-five interchange project, which, you know, continues to be one of the larger issues in the city from a cost standpoint, and trying to figure out exactly how to tackle that, and whether that's kind of a piecemeal approach or the entire portion. I think council member Walter told me, and I think Zach, it's now the top priority of the thirty-five, I-Three-five Alliance, so all the cities that are on Thirty-five from Minneapolis to Elka have put that as their top priority. So it continues to be for us, I believe it's the county's top transportation issue to save as well. So those are some of the two biggest highlights. There's one other issue that's not in here that I just wanted to raise today. And then it's kind of a small tweet thing. Actually Senator Duckworth has the bill for this, but there's, if you follow along this conversation about the Minneapolis twenty-fourty comp plan, there's been some lawsuits about how they want to implement that plan. And one of the lawsuits would actually impact almost every city that does a comprehensive plan. It would require each comp plan to go through environmental review, through the Minnesota Environmental Research Act, is that?
Quality Board.
Okay. And so there's some of the cities trying to talk about it, and the League of Cities actually put a little blurb in their legislative priorities, but we had not talked about this last fall. But personally, I think it makes sense to tweak that. I don't, I don't think a comp plan should have to go under environmental review. Obviously, each project, by project should go under that review with an entire comp plan. I don't even know how, from a staff standpoint, we could even do that. How long it would take, the amount of money it would take to do that. I mean, it just is, it's absurd. So that's in the courts. So assuming that the courts didn't rule in favor of Minneapolis, that would be a problem that we would have to figure out to address. Having a legislative fix would be important. Are there any other highlights that I missed that anybody else in the council wanted?
There is one that I just learned about literally ten minutes before we walked in. The city of Lakeville participates in several solar garden projects across the state, well, around here. And it produces a significant amount of savings to the city of Lakeville. Basically, we pay a certain amount of our electric bills to participate in these solar farms, so that we cannot have to buy them, but the energy is then put in the grid. We get credits then from the developers who couldn't then. It sounds like there might be a push at this session to cut that amount of credit. I think Excel is really pushing that, that this becomes more expensive for them. And what I've learned is that cities and school districts especially, if those credits are cut, we are going to be on the hook for that. And that was never part of the discussion when these were put into place. And so, you know, over the life of it, these three, I think we anticipated saving about a million dollars over the twenty years for all of them. And we're well into that, and if those are to be cut, that would be a significant for our taxpayers.
Did you hear other cities talk about that, or the league, or?
I actually just read an article, it's just on the Star Trip this evening about it, so.
Okay. And sorry, the one other one, the big issue that I did, we did, had not in our priorities last year, but popped up from the legislature, which is the school resource officer issue, which is, continues to be important for our city to be able to make sure that the law is corrected. So we, that's another new provision. So I just wanted also, if you had any questions, or legislators or commissioners on anything that's in there, or there's also an opportunity, if you want to just give a couple of minutes on your thoughts about session, and kind of how you want to see that play out. So I'm gonna defer to Zach first, just because you're in office that air longer than Jeff's.
Okay, sure, sounds good. Well, we're gonna go by that, we should defer to Mary Liz for sure.
Well, I started staying first.
Well, I think what would be most helpful for me, and given our discussion, and because I did promise Commissioner Holberg, this was my number one priority, is the County Road Fifty and Thirty-five B interstate exchanges. Just maybe talking about where we are right now. I know that Congresswoman Craig and the federal government are stepping up to the plate to help us with that. I know the county, it's important to them. Jeff, John and I have been working at it from the state standpoint. So just, I guess, a good professional, where things currently stand, and what is it that we need to bring together in order to keep moving it forward, aside from, you know, fifty-seven million dollars in the next bonding bill. Mary Liz, you're probably the most well-versed time.
Well, I mean, we're at a point where we've gotten some engineering funds from the feds. You know, the city has kicked in a significant portion of money over the years, acquiring land and some other things. And it's a, it's a matter of staging the project. I think the bridge is twenty-six million. So I think the request for the bridge from the county was thirteen million, went through bonding. The entire project to actually fix the bottleneck problem, in addition to all the interchanges, is a hundred and twenty million and some change, I think. And, you know, at the end of the day, none, no entity is gonna be able, oh, okay, Bill's telling me that might be.
Ninety-five. Depends on what you are planning.
Okay.
So, the twenty-six is, what's the county road underneath? The county has said, we'll put up thirteen, or ask the state for thirteen to the county. Beyond that, you could go sixty for just the bridge and the interchange. Or you, you're not gonna, two hundred million, if you're talking about mid-pass from Burnsville. The project, we got state money too, for the planning, thank you. And the initial study showed that we shouldn't stop at fifty, we need to go down to one hundred and eighty-fifth street. And if you can imagine, just like the one thing, like if you're getting on at Perkins to go south, and to get off to go to Supertarget, there's no frontage roads on either side, and there's no slip lane either. So you have to, actually have to merge on and then get off. An easy fix there is to do a slip lane, so that you'd have that merge in and out, and hopefully alleviate some of the backup on. So they recognized, it got, and that's attention, let's put it that way, the study did. And then the last round of quarters of commerce, we scored the highest of any project that wasn't funded statewide. We actually tied with the lowest funding in the donut in order to get the quarters of commerce out of the money debt. So, but that project scored higher by a country mile than anything in greater Minnesota, no pun intended.
The Duluth Bridge?
Yeah.
So I, I think the time is now, the, I think the unique thing about Thirty-five Solutions Alliance is many of our friends north of four ninety-four would just assume see no road expansion, and it induces travel demand. And where's my early morning friend here? Some of the things we hear at that meeting are a little. Back lanes. But even they recognize that everything north has been done, the Burnsville-Blowington Bridge, four ninety-four is fully funded. Everything south, downtown Minneapolis, you know, it's kind of like our turn, that whole travel shit. So that's encouraging. The mayor worked hard with Congressman Craig's office to send a letter to Governor Walz to urge his support. Now, he doesn't do transportation earmarks in his bonding bill, because he's still old school, you know, with the transportation earmarks, but I don't know if that helps, but we have a loving one-page sheet that we're really concentrating on that first piece, because there's just no way until you buy that bridge. If you imagine a detour staying on state roads, they'd have to take people off the freeway in Northfield, bring them to the east over to three, or to the west over to one sixty-nine, and then they wouldn't get them back on a state road again until thirteen in Burnsville. So it's gonna be very difficult to shut down that freeway completely. And if, so if you do that bridge piece first, then you have the ability to shift traffic in lower lanes on one side or the other. So it's, I think we can make the case that that's a really important piece. The big risk to this is that greenhouse gas bill that passed, the projects that aren't in engineering, before February of twenty-five are going to be subject to mitigation. As the bill stands, if you can imagine the last four ninety-four project, in order to mitigate the greenhouse gas and the formulas they have, they would have had to build a hundred roundabouts in the sub-region to mitigate that project. So there's some, that's the biggest risk. We need to get going, because at some point, there's gonna be this impact where they're, they're trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled, so.
So I noticed this evening, the newspaper Star Trip, Wisconsin, Minnesota did receive a billion on the bridge piece, Superior. So now this is sort of a small project for to work on, and get the big ones out of the way.
Well, and Elka County got over a hundred million in earmarks in the last bonding bill, you know why? And so, quite frankly, a lot of stuff that's ahead of us on the list, or behind us, has gotten funding. So it just feels to me like somebody that's been around a really long time, that we're close, we're very close, and we need to keep pushing.
The, the thing that we're gonna need the most is, and we can probably start this process now, is figuring out what the exact amounts are, what the language of verbiage needs to be for the stuff that we get drafted. I know, and, you know, the longer it takes, the more things need to change, amounts go up, what have you. So if we can make sure that between now and before we start mid-February, we have everything exactly as we want it drafted and ready to drop, so we can get it heard immediately, and keep it in the front burner, that will be extremely important, so. Thank you very much. Any, the only other thing I would add, and I'll let Jeff touch on SRO stuff, and then of course John chime in on a few things too, is any tweaks that you might want made to some of the stuff you did get passed in the last bonding bill as it relates to the storage train stuff, as well as the regional public safety training facility? Having that information sooner rather than later, if we're gonna try to make any changes, and/or if we're gonna request funds for a fire station, just throwing that out there. Let us know sooner rather than later, so we can actually look at that, get the ball rolling on some of that stuff. Turn it over to Jeff.
The one thing I was gonna add about the thirty-five and fifty, right when I got into office last year, I met with the state, and what we've been talking about, projects going off the list, four ninety-four, thirty-five, it was raising ours up a little bit, and then the Stillwater. So I agree with Zach and Mary Liz. Let's have our discussion points. And the match from Dakota County is a big deal, I think, here that's gonna help. And I think that could be the catalyst for the city also, in getting other state funds. So I think we're definitely positioned, we just need to have all our ducks in a row. And I agree with Zach, that the more information we can get sooner, there's gonna be less bonding money probably this session. And so whatever we can get is gonna be helpful. Regarding the SROs, this item was brought to us after last session, after it went through education bill. And it was pointed out that our stakeholders were not at the table. We held a press conference, we've held roundtable discussions with our stakeholders from law enforcement, education, and community members, and then even some staff and around there, teachers. And there, there is a need for it. We've seen what's happened down in Mankato last week in Saint Louis, or Saint, Saint Louis Park High School. So with that said, our commitment has always been to hold them accountable to, and hold them to their promise that this will be the first thing coming out of session. I know on Zach's part, in my part, we do have bills that are ready to go. And I know some of this language really, from one twenty-one A in the education part, moving it into six oh nine oh six, which I think helps law enforcement. I think there's opportunities on the training component, and then also the, let's see, that relates back to our SROs, that is reasonable. And once again, that, that policy has the input from our law enforcement that are there. But also, another component that hasn't been at the table is our SROs as a group. They have an association, and having them at the table that are doing the job, because this doesn't just affect our police officers, it's affecting our teachers and our staff. And one of the main people that have been missed in this whole discussion, and I talk about it, is our students. Over ninety percent of our metro area and the seven county areas, students want the SROs in their school, over ninety percent. So we have to start listening to them, teachers, our law enforcement. And I'm encouraged that we'll have a solution, and we'll hopefully hold their feet to the fire at getting these hearings. We don't control the hearings, we can just bring the bills all along, Zach. And our whole caucus on both sides has been reaching across with a handout, looking for a bipartisan solution. So hopefully, that will happen in the beginning of session.
And thank you to the city of Lakeville for the stance that you take, and chief, and the clarity you provided, and the input feedback you provided. It's been beneficial to the entire statewide discussion, so I appreciate it.
Do you have any co-authors to these bills that you have prepped and ready to go?
I had a gentleman, a good friend of mine, Senator John Hoffman, who does belong to the other party, expressed interest in signing on before it became a political controversial issue. So we'll see what happens. I'll let any, everybody that wants to support the bill sign on to it. But of course, session has to start, so we don't have an actual bill to work if they just have language.
And my hope is that, yes, but there's already been some meetings that are one-sided again, which it's the process of it all. That's what got us into this mess, and that's what I unfortunately think is gonna, if we're gonna have a solution. I do agree with you, we should have co-authors on both sides, because I think it'd be a stronger bill that would get passed. There was forty-four legislators that said they knew what they signed and didn't want to make the change. So that's gonna be very narrow, and if we don't have a seat at the table, or we're able to work, I do think it makes it tougher that way. So it's a great question, I'm hoping, and I keep reaching out, and hopefully we'll have a bipartisan solution.
If you wanted to share any thoughts about, but the one thing that's on here that I thought you might want to add, dude, is the Met Council governance stuff, how that task force is playing out, and all the things that got figured out.
Well, I was down at City Hall, so it was good that none of you were there.
Sorry. Well, this is a good reminder. Our meetings will be starting at six o'clock shortly, in the next few weeks, but we'll notice.
Well, I like this format better. I think it's more conducive to better conversation, so I appreciate that from previous years. I think those Senator and Representative covered a lot of what to expect from session. I think, looking back at last session, we'll give you a strong indication, it gives me a strong indication. You may have different opinions of how this session will be. It's going into election year, so I'm never super optimistic of a lot getting done. Mayor had asked about, there's a task force dealing with how the Met Council is governed in the structure. Commissioner Holberg has worked on this issue for a long time. It's, it's an issue that's been around as long as the Met Council has been around. Essentially, there are some, Senator Dibble particularly wants an elected Met Council. Many of us are in the opinion, and there's bipartisan opposition to an elected Met Council for a variety of reasons, but many of my reasons are that it would become a mini legislature, and dominated by the core cities, and so it would not represent a suburb or an exurb like Lakeville and other areas, the needs better. It's a fallacy that it would create more transparency or accountability. It would, in my opinion, add another layer of government, another person at the end of the ballot that people would just either skip altogether, or they wouldn't remember who it is, right next to the soil and water conservation people. If there's any soil and water people, no offense. You know, but, you know, some people skip over even legislative races, they'll just go in and put it at the top of the ticket. So it, you know, the purpose is to figure out if there's a better governance structure that cities, townships, counties can be more, their vision be incorporated better into the Met Council with their, their planning and budgeting. And an elected Met Council just doesn't get there for me. Another option that many other states and/or metropolitan areas across the country have, their current elected mayors, city council people, county commissioners, they have a regional board. It's basically a joint powers agreement, but it's an established regional board that acts as the metropolitan planning organization to take in funds. And it seems to work good enough in other areas. In other areas of the Minnesota, there's other MPOs. And so with the task force, there, even though it was stacked with Minneapolis residents representing certain areas on that task force, even though it was stacked with mostly Democrats on that task force, there is still very difficult to get to consensus, which is fine with me. If we, if they had consensus, and they're gonna push for it in the next couple of days, we have a report due by February, it would go into the legislative session, they would argue that it gives a little bit of a mandate towards an elected Met Council, that there's strong opposition among Democrats as well, and I'm told even the Speaker of the House, but don't say that outside this room. So I feel confident that Lakeville's interests will be protected by, you know, at minimum the status quo. But there's, you know, if we can work towards a council of governments type model, where maybe the mayor, or appointed city councilperson, or appointed county commissioner from Dakota, or Scott County, or other counties, that would improve a lot of the, some of the issues with, with Met Council. One of the things we could do too, is the nominating process, instead of serving at the pleasure of the governor, and the local units of government would, among themselves, decide who will represent a certain district in the Met Council. We're also discussing and seem to have a little bit of consensus of expanding the number of people in the Met Council. I know our Met Councilperson Wendy Wolf have appreciated working with her over the years. It's always been accessible to me and involved in the community, to take a little off their plate and have it less staff-driven. There's a little bit of support for adding more seats on the Met Council, so you get a more variety of opinions and less staff-driven is the intent, but other than that, Senator Duckworth mentioned a bonding bill. I'm not optimistic of a bonding bill. I think we can talk about some of these projects that have some concerns, to put it politely, on the bonding process that happened last year. I was happy to support some of the projects that Lakeville had, and they, unfortunately, seemed to be falling apart. So I think I just say here, we need to tighten that up a little bit, and we'll leave it at that.
Okay. Chris Holberg, did you want to add anything? Fifteen thirty-five, anything?
Just real briefly, the Fifty Hamburg project, with the help of the other Commissioner Holberg. I still get stuck on that, I get it sharing, I admit it. We are, that's gonna go into engineering ASAP, and it'll, it'll city match for the redo. And it's recommend, it'll be a roundabout, depending on how, they're saying construct in twenty-six, but we'll keep pushing to accelerate that, and it'll depend a lot on how much right away, if any, you know, you own two parts, two of the four parts. And then just a heads up, Bill, one of the discussion points this year at the county will be cost sharing roads. What makes sense, what other counties are doing, some of the struggle with, I mean, when I got there, it was a forty-five match, so I've made a lot of progress, okay, give me credit for that. But that, some of the discussion around, say, thirty-five, fifty, there isn't even a city road there. I mean, so look for some input and discussion on that this year. Not technically legislative, but important policy change that could have positive ramifications for your CIP budget.
There would. Chris Drosty, anything you wanted to add?
You know, I was thinking, we have two greenways, Mendota and North Creek, which is on your order in our funding, and we probably have three other road projects relatively small compared to what you have here. So if we receive funding clearly, we hope it's this one.
Oh, for that bonding, okay.
I'd say, other than that, a lot of Health and Human Service requests them. That pretty much falls on the county and is sent down to you, but it would impact, especially on the police side. We're looking at the mental health issue, both on the youth side and the adult, and the fentanyl stuff.
And then opportunities for opioid and housing collaboration, if you want, and I think somebody, we're all sitting on pots of money, though we don't really know what we're doing yet, so.
Yeah, okay. Anything you wanted to add from the district?
I think it's been pretty well covered.
Yeah.
And we're trying to figure out how to coordinate with all this new money that other people have. I'm trying to work well with others instead of reinventing the wheel.
Anything from Councilor Allison, did you want a federal update?
Oh, I didn't prepare anything. I haven't really touched base, but I know that I'm gonna be playing a big part in just like serving as a congressional liaison when it comes to bonding. So I was gonna call for a meeting with the mayor, and can I just talk about, you know, the priorities? So hearing all of this is really helpful to being able to steer in a certain direction for you guys. But anything that we can do to help, just let us know.
Right, thanks.
Yep, just one other alibi. As you're, I know you've already given some of the feedback to us, and maybe some of it goes through the league or other association you belong to, but any of the laws that you've identified would either need tweaks or lack clarity? The first one that comes to mind is obviously legalization of marijuana, what that means for you, what the permitting process looks like. Like, I don't, I'll just say it very plainly, I don't, I don't want to hear from people that represent this group or that group. Like, I need to hear directly from you all, who are the governing body that has to implement it, deal with it, have to deal with the impacts, and have the police chief that has to deal with enforcing it, figuring things out. What, what, what changes or tweaks need to be made to it, or would it be?
Well.
I'm not asking right now to answer that question, but.
I do have some for you.
Oh, you do? Good. Other, so other than wiping out municipal liquor licenses, what else?
Well, the first thing I'd say about cannabis is, I mean, we're at the certain spot we're at. I think my nervousness would be, we've spent a lot of staff time, a lot of council time implementing what's there, and I'd hate for them to go back, or ready next session, or even next year, the year after, to start. And I'd hate for them to go back already next session, or even next year, the year after, to start changing regulatory stuff again, if we have to go back. And so I get nervous when the authors are like, well, you know, we've been tweaking liquor laws for a hundred years or whatever. It's a burden on cities from a staff perspective for sure, to do implementation and make changes and those type of things. And, you know, the same goes for paid sick leave and saving sick time, and that's impact stuff. Since it has a huge price tag for taxpayers on the city side and the county. And, you know, even more is the school district, I mean, you start talking about their contract that they're trying to figure out. This is a year ahead of next year when they're going to have to figure out how to pay for their, for that. And so I think, yeah, I don't know, those are some, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, the other thing I think that we, that we need to be discussing, county, city, us in the legislature is looking at how, what, what is it that we can do that's not going to tie our hands behind our backs, so to speak, in the services you have to provide? But what can we do from a property tax relief standpoint? And I'm going to need smarter minds and minds that represent the city and represent the county and other places to figure out what's actually realistic and worth the things we can do. Because thankfully, we are in a community in which that's been handled very well. But it keeps going up, and we hear from all over the state that it's one of those things, it's really hammering people. Talk about our seniors and, you know, fixed income, they made projections years ago. The great state of Minnesota just blew those projections out of the water. And also didn't deliver them the tax resource of security that was promised. That's, that's most I'll be on my soapbox, I promise. So, and I promise I didn't look at the agenda, the only other thing I want to let you guys know that I'll be looking at as a priority is helping out our firefighters and their pensions, so I'm just throwing that out there too.
Talked about all of them, Senator.
Oh, good. That's why I sat next to you.
Yeah, well, good, I appreciate the conversation and the relationships we've been able to build and kind of all move in the same direction behalf of our city, so I'm grateful for those partnerships and, and wish you all the luck.
Can I just, I just want to add one thing, all this sales tax money that came from the three-quarters sense. A bunch of that's going directly to TAB because they didn't want to give it to the Met Council. And so I'm serving on a working group to try and identify how those funds should be distributed. Because again, they're very heavily already directed towards bike, pedestrian transit. Very little roads, and we're also redoing our solicitation process for the federal funds, we're starting in twenty-six. And there's an interrelatedness to that. And just to give you some idea of the, how off balance the funding streams are in our presentation. From Met Council, they raised this local metro tax three times higher than what the governor had requested. And then when Mindot got up and talked about their legislative session, barely a third of their unmet needs were met in the funding. So there's, there's going to be a continual tension of people, for the communities that need road money. It's going to be limited and hard to get, so. I'll be at the table fighting for it.
And anything with the dam patch study, light rail, make sure that the cost per rider for orange line is part of whatever report comes out. So continue to drive down thirty-five and there's nobody in a single orange line plus.
John's got it covered up.
Around transportation anymore, but probably won't get back there.
Well, good, you guys are welcome to stay for our next agenda. Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
In the past years, you've had a legislative priorities flyer or?
I can email to you, I've got it. We have, it's, it's relatively same as last year, except for there's.
That's one other question. With the new design of the state symbol, emblem and the flag, what's your cost going to be? I mean, it's going to be helpful when it comes, just an overview, because there's a lot of different things, and I don't think there's any. I think there's going to be an unfunded mandate back to you guys, so it would be nice to know with some of this money. If you guys have some numbers, that would be.
Yeah, I mean, police badges.
Fire, I'm assuming, but any, any buildings or stuff like that, where it's. Yeah, the only thing I can think of is our police badge.
I don't think we can use it.
That's good, thank you.
So our next item is the regional public safety training facility.
So I'll ask Todd LeVole and Megan McCullough to step onto the table. They're with Leo A. Daley, the council members. Late last year, we hired Leo A. Daley to do architectural plans, specifications, designing the regional public safety training facility. We're kind of at that, end of that first phase of design concepts. We've kind of gone through five or six different design meetings, we've had an open house, we've invited in other jurisdictions to come and take a look at the design and kind of give their input on possible usage, partners and membership and all that kind of stuff. So we thought this was a good point to stop and kind of just give the presentation to city council and see where you guys were at on the project and kind of give us some feedback on the overall design concept and proposed budget. So with that all.
Sorry, Leo A. Daley, too many architects at one time.
Fight words. Thank you, Alan. Again, on top of all of Leo A. Daley, lead a lot of our public work and specifically public safety work. And Megan McCullough is our architect on this project. We really didn't want to get in front of you early, rather than later. When we first started on this project, we did, we, we were a little concerned about the cost. The, the budget before that. And so that's why we kept arranging this project, getting in front of you early. As Ellen had mentioned, we spent six or seven meetings looking at starting point for this project. It's a PDF, so you just click the mouse.
You know what, I'm just going to hold it today.
Thank you. Like Ellen had mentioned, we've met several times to kind of take starting point for this project and, and understand and break it down a little bit more, we had some concerns about the layout of the pre-designed project. And, and again, that cost is a part of it. We also have been looking at a pro forma for this project as well. And we're in the middle of that process right now. We've had a meeting with kind of a roundtable with a bunch of the agencies in the area that could potentially be using this. We did a survey, and Megan will be talking about that. So we're not quite got the mold of that yet, but we're in the, in the process. And now we're at the council workshop, and again, we wanted to get in front of you now rather than later on, if anything. Were to change, it's a lot easier to change now, later, so felt this was too. Just a little background for you all, if you haven't been following this project. You know, this area of the metropolitan area is, is lacking in immediate needs for this type of facility. One of the biggest things with these types of projects is just being within the close proximity of training facilities and not having to take your officers off the streets or paying for overtime to travel to different areas. So as you can kind of see through the distribution of some of the facilities that are similar to this, it's kind of a hole here. And again, just kind of highlighting again some of the local neighbors that could be a part of this process and project as well. So the site is the old Public Works Facility site. There was a study at one point to look at whether or not to utilize the existing building that had been scrapped. Is not feasible and not something that would be, you know, best use of money. So we're looking at demoing that building on the property and starting from, from a new. So I want to talk just a little bit about these types of facilities and give you some imagery of what we were talking about over the last couple of months. First thing I want to say is, we feel that these projects are, you know, a significant project, they're dignified projects. We're trying to take training for public safety people out of the big dude realm and into buildings that have some substance and, and not saying Taj Mahal's here, but they are of a, a kind that deserves to have a building. Some of the sampling of work that we've done and talked about as examples of, of the types of facilities. North Metro Range, Maple Grove, the Hero Center and Cottage Grove. And the project of in North Carolina that we worked on, those were kind of three that we looked at a lot as comparisons and contrasting what's good, what's not good, so. So I want to first talk about the range itself. There was a lot of discussion about the range, as I'm, I'm trying to understand what type of range you want. All ranges aren't the same, the lengths, the widths, the type of training you're doing, the amount of implement that goes into each range. A little different based on the type of training you're using. And the other thing we talked about is, does one big range make sense? Or is two ranges that are, one a little bit larger and a smaller one makes sense? A, we looked at that for reasons of accessibility. If one range is full, it's full, it's being used, you can't use it, nobody else can use it, you can't rent it out. So the concept of having two ranges in about the same square footage came to light so that you could have accessibility more often. And really, what it comes down to a lot of times with these facilities is you want to have the training when you need to have the training. And there's peaks within the year where the training is pretty evident, and we'll talk about that later. But the idea of having two, two ranges was something that, from a usability standpoint, accessibility was made sense. And from a, a cost recovery and having some revenue was coming, it'd be easier to, to capture some revenues, made some sense. We'll talk about the size of that range in a little bit. Some of the spaces that a range require. It's not just the range, they need to have spaces for cleaning your weapons, storing your ammo. Fixing your weapons, things like that, there are ancillary spaces within these buildings that need to be provided. And we would talk through that as we were going through the process. Reality-based training, I think that's really at the heart of what the whole concept of this building is. Whether it's, whether it's in the range itself or within the components of this building. We had a lot of discussions and will continue to have discussions as we move forward about how can we design this building so that it can replicate real world situations? To put officers and firefighters in situations that not only are more realistic, but also able to work together in some instances where you can't do that now. And so these are some of the imageries of things that we were looking at, to make sure we could accommodate a fire truck inside a facility understand what it means for a firefighter to occupy this building and, and use it at the same way, but different that a police officer would, and there are some subtle differences there. Some more imagery of, you know, trying to understand how EMS can even be a part of this. How we can create indoor environments such as this to replicate streets, streetscapes. And do that inside, so you're not out there in dirty below weather like it was the last couple of weeks, you can do that, you know, during the winter months. And then I think the other important aspect of this was also trying to understand how the building itself can be used as a prop from the outside. How do you approach the building? How, how are those scenarios created to use the building itself as the prop? But also to make sure that when they're having training scenarios outside, they don't want to be watched. They don't want to have to have people peeking in on them. So we want to screen the buildings in such a way that allows them to freely do their work without neighbors either complaining or peeking in. A couple other types of rooms that we talked about were dedicated mats room where spots resistance training can happen, de-escalation training can happen and happen in a safe environment where you're limiting the amount of chances for injury during training, which happens a lot more often than, you know, we'd like. So making sure it's not just throwing mats down on the ground, that it's something beyond that. And then the use of technology was another piece that we have continually been talking about, it's changing. There's some great stuff out there right now, these are, you know, three-sided or five-sided virtual reality screens. But there's also goggles that are coming on the market that are, you know, going to be probably the way to go in the future. And these types of pieces of equipment are great for practicing scenarios and just being a tool that can offer a lot of different options for a police officer beyond, you know, training in a kind of an acting way. These take up a little bit more room than what's kind of coming down the pipe in the future, so we're still having those discussions about what that might be. And then, of course, classroom, there's always a need for classroom space. And I think one thing that we talked about was to make sure that classroom space is flexible. There's a need at times to have a hundred people in a classroom. So you can bring in a, a, a regional or a national speaker and have host your own instruction classes and bring in people from the area, so you're getting the latest and greatest across the country. But most of the time, there's a need to have twenty people, sometimes break that into smaller groups yet and want to make sure that that classroom is as flexible as possible for doing rollaway or just laying out lectures.
So we wanted to talk briefly from a high level, what this specific facility would entail. This is a high-level program, and as Todd mentioned earlier, we're still very early in the process, so nothing is completely set in stone. So this facility would encompass two firing ranges, as Todd alluded to. We have a fifty-yard range with approximately thirteen lanes, and that's coming in a little over eleven thousand square feet. And then we have a smaller range, twenty-five yard range, six lanes wide, and that's a little over thirty-five hundred square feet. And then as Todd mentioned, we have ancillary spaces associated with those firing ranges, the gun cleaning, the armor, the ammo storage. We have some storage spaces as well. So next we'll go into more of the common spaces, the more administrative spaces. The classroom that can flex from forty-five to a hundred people with the use of an operable partition. That room is a little over twenty-three hundred square feet. We have break space for approximately thirty-five people, main lobby with an office and a front desk, and then a twelve-person conference room. And then moving into that reality-based training that, that Todd was talking about earlier with the VR. We have space for a mats room, VR room, and then a large flexible training tactical space, the reality-based training. And that room would have the movable walls that you saw a couple slides passed. So it just adds an opportunity for flexible training space in that enclosed environment that Todd talked about. And then that space, that, that reality-based training space would have a second level that would be open. It would also have some mechanical space in that room as well.
And that is one of the things I think that was important about this was having a second floor, a second level adds into the training, just reality of things, there's always second floors in many buildings, most buildings. So that was kind of a missing component in the last go-around. So we wanted to make sure, understand how we can start to introduce stairs and how to navigate those and what that means for even EMS or fire and other.
So right now, that main training building is coming in at forty-six thousand three hundred thirty-nine square feet. That doesn't include a warehouse or a cold storage facility, which would be about five thousand square feet. However, that warehouse was included in the cost estimate.
That's a good done question. So to have the second floor, do you ever need a third floor or higher? Or is the second floor satisfactory? I guess I'm just wondering if one more floor is better.
Obviously would be better, we're trying to be cost-conscious and. We're trying to be cost-conscious and that. But, you know, there's a lot of three-story apartment buildings around, four-story, five-over ones, things like that that, you know, couldn't quite be replicated here in that, in that condition. But we'd love to do that. We're just cognizant of the dollars for that.
So every story would add?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my tongue right now, but it, you know, I don't think it needs a whole, you can get by.
It's not a part of the building.
Yeah, exactly. You can get by with a very small portion of the building and probably still give you the scenarios that you're looking for, so.
All right. So we'll move into the floor plan so you can see what all these numbers really look like spatially. We're going to start at this center core. This is that admin kind of common space area. So you would enter into this main lobby and we had a break room and a classroom, your front desk, the conference, and then the toilet, toilets and restrooms. And then moving to the west, to the left, we have our firing ranges. We have the, the large firing range that would primarily be for law enforcement use. And then the smaller firing range that we talked about earlier would also be used for public space, for public access as well. And then all of the associated uses that come along with firing range, the storage, the control rooms, the gun cleaning, the armor. We have a loading area here to the south where law enforcement could potentially pull car in or you could offload some of the ammo into this ammo storage facility. And then on the right side of that core classroom, common space area, we have the reality-based training and your tactical training spaces. So your VR room, your mats room with a shared storage space in between, your tactical spaces with movable wall systems, storage room, and then the possibility of pulling a car in if needed. And then, as Todd mentioned, we're looking for ways to make this building as flexible and multifaceted from a training perspective as possible. So looking at ways that they could use this corridor and the classrooms to simulate perhaps an active shooter situation, using those stairs to simulate kind of a second floor kind of scenario. We also have, you see over here on the second floor level, incorporated balconies and doors. So if you were doing a fire training scenario where you had to rescue from the second level, you could, you could use that here at the building instead of going elsewhere. And then on the far end of the building or far end of the site, we have our warehouse space. And we're seeing this, this area in between these, these two buildings as that alleyway that Todd showed earlier where you could simulate a traffic stop or some kind of a scenario like that. But you're, you're kind of protected from the public view and it's a more private space to do that training. So constantly looking for ways where the building can become a multifaceted tool, a flexible tool for your training as well.
Okay, another dumb question. Is there ever a reason to have public access separate from the access for first responders, law enforcement, et cetera? Different, would there be any reason to? Is any of this kind of like, we want to keep it under the radar type of thing? So if the public were to be able to use shooting range or maybe the mats, is there a separate entrance that they would have and not have access to the rest of the building?
Typically, we've been thinking about this facility as definitely public accessible, but not at the same time as law enforcement. Meaning on a Saturday, open to the public for shooting, open to the public for classrooms, maybe at night. That's one of the things that we wanted to make sure about in the plan here was to make sure that the classroom was the first thing that was accessible from the front door, that there's a primary point of access to, to monitor who's coming and going here. So we didn't think about it as this is the public entrance and this is the law enforcement entrance, but rather more about how the building gets used over time. Certainly, there wouldn't be a situation where the firing range has public people and the police officers at the same time. It would be at different times throughout the course of the year.
We would card the building similar to City Hall where it would be completely secure and only those that were allowed to go into certain areas would have access with a proxy card. In addition, this includes state funding, as you know. And part of that requirement is we have to provide certain hours of public access to facility.
Well, I mean, I guess I was thinking even in the mats room, there would be some place to do self-defense training, even if our, even if our law enforcement was teaching it to the public, you know, that type of thing. But I just didn't know if, so with the card system that I work, to be able to limit the accessibility of certain areas.
Yeah.
It doesn't help on a safety, in my mind, a safety issue, if people understand fully the training that they could then figure out how to avoid certain situations based on the training that our people have. Does that make sense?
They won't be there during the trainings. They're just going to see a room. They're not going to see what happens.
Okay. I'm sure, just overthinking it.
No, it's, it's a great question because that's something what we're always thinking about is how does the public, because the public will use this building and we have to think about that. But it, it mostly comes down to scheduling, you know, not at the same times. But I think that's one of the things we, we wanted to make sure that you didn't have to walk through a training environment to get to the classroom. Because the classroom is probably the thing that most of the people would be coming there for on a Saturday, whether that or the range.
So what's the business case for the two ranges? You mentioned something about, you know, be able to do more training and I think there's, there's, how does it pay for, I mean, because that's a lot, I mean, if you, if you look at percentages of space, it takes up a lot, obviously. So I'm like, what's the, is there an ability really to have two ranges financially?
It's, the original plan had one large range that was about the size of the two ranges. Take a couple thousand square feet.
Okay.
But two ranges is definitely more expensive. You've got two systems you've got to deal with. I, I think that the thing that we hear a lot of times, even in facilities that are pretty new, they're like, no, we can't get in. We can't get in. We want to be there, but we can't get in. So that's, that's the one thing about having the two ranges is if, if the chief here has three officers that need to have some, some training, they can go into the small range and free up that bigger range for a whole agency to come in and rent it. Is the theory behind part of this? Another part of the aspect of this that we've been thinking about a lot is police agencies generally don't like to have the overhead retrievers. They don't need those, the, the targeting systems that go down range and come back. That's more of a public shoot kind of environment with the shooting stalls. That's just something that they don't need because they go to the target and they want to be able to move ladder. So what we're doing in this facility is using the smaller range for that type of shooting that would be more stalled and retriever type of, of shooting. Again, so that it frees them up, the bigger range to have more flexibility. And you're not paying for, you know, X more stalls.
It's not the same question about the second floor, the opposite.
Well, I was.
Do we, do we really need to have two classrooms? Is there, is there a business case to having a second floor?
Just second floor up here.
Yeah. Or we're just doing it because if we're already building, we might as well. Like I'm trying to, but we, we have this much money and it costs this much money. And I'm trying to figure out like, where are these little tweaks that we can make to get what we need?
One, the thing we always kind of think about is each of these spaces. And if you can subcreate them enough to have an agency upstairs and an agency downstairs, now you've got more rent, more rental income, if you will. Still costs you a lot of money to build it, but that's one of the pieces that we're thinking about as well. So we want to make sure that an agency can access that training without disrupting another agency.
Oh, Darren, I guess I look at it as another second sheet of ice. So just look at it that way from a business point of view, a second sheet of ice.
Yeah.
And then utilize it.
What I'm not seeing very clearly is how the fire trainings pieces integrated into this. Because I mean, when it comes to a second level, it's a necessity, especially with ladder training and stairwells and whatnot. We just did a space study with some ideal conditions for fire training. When we see this again, I'd like to have a better understanding of how that's integrated into this space. And, you know, maybe a tower is a third tower stairwell that reaches three stories or four stories as needed so that it's ideal for the fire piece of this. Because it seems a majority police department focused and I, and that, maybe I'm just missing the fire piece, but.
Well, I think that's a good observation and it's something that we've been having discussions about and trying to understand. Can, can both agencies use like the movable wall systems that we've been talking about? Police officers can use them, they're great. They can shoot them with their, you know, simulated ammunition. Firefighters can drag a hose that's dry through there and do some search and rescue things and some EMS type of training very well, but they can't turn a hose on and they're damaging the wall panels. So we're, we're trying to find the flexibility between what works for, for both. And I think we're just having those beginning conversations right now.
But to me, as we're talking about cost, because I appreciate you being cost-conscious, but we're looking at, at the moment, training facilities and potentially multiple fire stations. And so if that can be here, there's.
That could be cost savings.
Cost savings are in the other buildings.
Well, yeah, so that's my next question for staff, and that is, have we appraised this land at any point in the last couple of years? Because I look at the map and we own, if you cobble it together, there's probably a sale piece for something commercial. Can we then co-locate this at Fire Station Five? And have a little more synergy on the fire and police training? Does that make sense? I mean, if, if this, Fire Station Five, we don't know what the parcel is or how big it is. If we have bigger demand, is there some cost savings on selling this and doing projects to get?
We can. Tell us that tonight though, because we're spending money here.
Yeah.
And we've asked this before and you directed us to still go down this route.
But, yeah, but that was last week when we finally said, okay, we're going to spend $36 million.
The privacy is the issue. Fire Station Five is not necessarily going to be mine.
No, but if they're doing, if it's designed the way that they're talking about with the exterior stuff for the outside, nobody looking at, I mean, I'm less concerned about that.
Yeah, so from the very beginning, we've informed the OI Daily that of this other stuff that we have going on with the fire station. So they've always had that on their radar. How do we incorporate as much as we can of fire safety training into this building? Not really knowing yet what Station Five is going to look like. Station Five, whatever that number is, Station X, I guess.
I'm calling it five just because.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two, you know.
So part of that is we went a little bit different. We went as, what can we do here as much as possible, short of using water on the site for fire safety training? Because we feel that, and you know, Mike has been in those, the fire chief has been in those meetings as well. He's leaning more towards having those water training items in the new fire station. Which makes some sense because that's where they would do most of that, that's where their equipment is at, that's where their hoses are.
But then at the end of the day, are they ever really going to travel to another site when they could just do their?
Now, at this site, what we haven't mentioned is that second floor would be their helping with their, with the training name. But where they, where they dark out their mask, they do all their dark, dark out training in there. They can do smoke in there, they just can't do wet stuff. So that's kind of been the trade-off is we can do a lot of the stuff that fire can do here, as long as it's not wet. That wet stuff can be at a fire station.
Also remember a couple of other things. We do have ABLE, which is a live burn facility that we already have. And then also remember, this is no cast aspersions for either department here. This is kind of a wish list.
Yeah, I get that.
As is the fire department study that we had. Those were all wish list items, right? It doesn't mean that those are all absolutely 100% necessary. So as we go through designing fire stations, just as we're going through designing this, we're probably not going to have everything that was identified in either of those studies. It's not going to be, it's not going to be, it's not going to be practical.
So we did, we did do an appraisal on this, it wasn't appraisal, it was a market study. That APRO did for us. Can you remember what it came out to? The building was, I'd have to look it up, but it was less than $50,000.
Yes, my thought processes is that you kind of want this regional facility to be as state of the art as possible, be able to attract as many members, partners, et cetera, as possible. And the amenities that come with this facility is what the attraction will be and the price thereof of what you're going to start.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just wondering if there's efficiencies if we're going to be building two buildings in the public safety room, how can we?
Right. And the efficiencies I was thinking about is what can we eliminate on the fire station side? The classrooms would be one I would think of that could just be here at this facility, which would give us, you know, space for whatever at a fire station. But I guess, okay, for somebody that is usually very cost-conscious about a lot of things, the last thing I want to do is create a scenario where we make something and we were cost-conscious about it, but it's not going to attract enough business. And so we have to think of it as a more of a business plan as to what we're doing with this facility than we would with a fire station per site. That makes sense. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I'm just, I'm just thinking, I know that we're like wedded to the site, but I think it's got some value. I'm just, I want to know, can we, is there an infrastructure cost savings by, you know, when we're talking about road development? Like all these, if we're going into a blank slate with new fire station, is there a way to still have all these amenities, but we can cut some costs on infrastructure or whatever?
There is. We would probably have to pause this process here because then we're talking about looking at land.
Right.
More land than what we were thinking about for the fire station. And reevaluating what we do.
But the other thing is we have a third of it funded right now. So like, you know, how much, you know, if we pause till May to see if we get some more state funding, is that going to derail everything, I guess?
If you, if you look at the locations of the facilities that they had highlighted earlier in their presentation, they're all within industrial areas, non-residential, not commercial areas.
That's a challenge, I get that.
And that, that, I mean, if you were going to pick a site, what a training facility like this, it would be at the industrial parks. I think. I think people would probably agree with that. I think, kind of talked, we talked about that quite a bit at our meeting, so.
So put in a Cedar and Donlin.
It's pretty high-dollar buckland for us.
I don't know that our community wants firing range there either. I think for me, I was just thinking it's purely on the train, fire training side. If there's any way to remove that from potential fire stations and combining here. Because it's like we have half of it. Can you, can you look back to the sight line?
Yeah, and I think now that we've got some good direction from Council at the last retreat, we could go. I think now that we have a direction with the fire station stuff, that's going to help us narrow in on that design and what all that means and what we can do here as a kind of a trade-off to kind of make a balance of what makes sense here and what makes sense at a new fire station.
Because we, we own a lot of the parcels around there too. That, where his hand is, we own that, plus the other side of that other building, we own that.
We do.
But that looks like there's water, but.
There is.
So on that other side, that does not look like water.
Well, that's, that's the, that's a the creek, South Creek.
Yep.
Creek, sorry. It's a creek.
Well, there's, yeah, there's like two parcels. There's one that's an acre and a half and then it looks like.
Yeah. That's a whole watershed district for that creek. And that's another, that's kind of one of the other reasons that our environmental resources have been like, don't have them do foam and chemical stuff here because.
Right.
It's right at the creek.
Yep.
They won't be able to do anything with it. So, and then the, the parcels you pointed to are already stormwater basins. Or they're within the flood plain or buffer area of the creek.
Okay. Was gonna point out here that, you know, that, that second building that we haven't really talked about too much. Um, was um, potentially used for some storage for police or public works for fire. Um, but beyond that is this side of the site. And actually, it's, it's actually really a perfect spot for some fire type of training. And we talked about that in the future, that could that be some areas where uh some, some additional fire. Aspects are located, or does that, does that uh storage building become? Right now, we were thinking of it as a, a blank slate for anybody to use it for any kind of training. We originally wanted to have the wall that was facing the rest of the training facility. Uh, mimic a uh, uh strip mall front, storefront. So that could be used to enter in the facility from that kind of courtyard, center courtyard. That can also be used for fire, uh, especially for fire, to be honest. And think about that building as a fire, um, more fire heavy than the, than the rest of the main building too. If that was a direction that was um, thought that that made sense to, you know, build here instead of there. Especially if it's in a more residential area, I don't know where Station, Station Five would be, but. There's some we have been talking about.
Yeah, I, I think maybe I'll go on a little bit here when we get to the survey stuff, but that we'll start to talk about, a little bit about um. Our partners and where they came in on things. And it's the balancing of. You have one agency that really wants a pepper spray or chemical room, but they're the only ones who are gonna use it. So it doesn't really pay off for us to add that to the facility. So some of that will come out more in the pro forma and kind of the phase two of this project where we start digging into that more and figuring out exactly. Okay, what does pay off on this facility? Where can we make money or break even on this to make it worthwhile? So, so that's kind of to be continued, but.
I, so a question about what you got up there in terms of, I had a couple of questions. But the first one is about the range. How is the uh lead? How is the lead, lead mitigating?
Yeah, good question. Uh, first one, we've designed the building to have the uh, it's a uh, not a purge system. But I mean, uh, we recycle some of the air, so these are very uh expensive facilities to run. We wanna recycle the, the heated air. Uh, and we've made accommodations in the mechanical room up on the left, left hand side. So then you're changing the uh lead uh filters inside the building. Um, in that mechanical room, so it's not, uh, you're, you're able to do that, not the dead of winter. And more convenient to do the changes. And that takes special process that's confined to that room. And then uh, the bullet uh trap itself will have some containers out, just outside. It's a little tall uh unit that will collect all the, the lead from there. And that gets shipped away in a special procedure.
Cause that, that's a very expensive getting cost because if it isn't done well, it's very expensive.
Yeah, the flip side is you could, you can sell your brass and, and the trade off that, that's kind of a. Uh, hopefully we look for a break even on that, uh, selling the lead and the brass back to them as recycled. Helps to pay for the cost to get rid of the.
Then the second question is cost related. I mean, I, it occurs to me, I was born thirty years to. Yes, I would love to be able to use this, but now I just get to help figure out how to pay for it. It's high. And so you have, you have the cost to build it and the land and everything, but do you have an estimate of the ongoing cost to operating?
We have a um, what we did, I think, uh, we have a ballpark right now. We didn't really wanna share that. Yes, we weren't totally uh comfortable with our numbers yet and it's kind of midstream here still. Um, but it can vary between three hundred thousand dollars to nine hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's kind of what we're seeing across the, the region here with different facilities. And that depends on mostly about staff. How much staff you have really is the number one thing. Uh, the second biggest cost is your utility costs. Uh, but with higher usage, your deal utility costs will go up, but that means you're generating more revenue. So that they kind of offset each other a little bit. It's really about how many people you would have staffing so.
Yeah. And then, so that becomes a question of, and I know we'll see it later in the presentation about people's commitment and membership versus. All that and, and how are you able to fill the things once, once you have built and stuff like that. So yeah, then mitigation of the lead is probably my biggest question for this slide.
And we wanna keep all that stuff on the bar.
We get to the preferences that you've already surveyed for. You really, we didn't really survey for other uh community fire departments for training, did we, or?
We, we did. Uh, we didn't get a lot of feedback.
They, they were all invited, but we only had two or three departments shut.
So in my little mind, I'm just thinking about it, you know, in the future when we're trying to build the business plan. If we were to be going in the direction where we wanted a better, uh, more or not better, I guess. Um, more um, fire uh at the same training facility. Would that then increase the uh members' uh interests? Are those people thinking about, um, I would like to see more members, even partners. But um, but would that be something that would be enough of an asset to increase the interest? For more of the surrounding communities?
Potentially. Once we, again, once we dig into this more and look at more of it, where fire lands, Station Five or here. We can definitely readdress that.
I know we're probably running past our time.
Don't worry about it. We, we need to know what's called.
Yep, okay. Well, uh, obviously cost, it's a big factor. Um, numbers have just been going up, I mean, it's, everyone knows it. Um, we're looking at about a twenty million dollar, twenty point three million dollar base construction cost. And that's for the base building. Uh, then about a one point one or one point two million dollars for that basic warehouse building, non-heated. Uh, or non-conditioned space, I should say. Um, typical precast construction type. So with a total of about twenty one point four, twenty one point five million dollars, all in uh construction, construction costs. Escalated to, I believe it's twenty twenty five.
So you tell me if we wait longer in twenty five, we save a million dollars. Is that what that number means?
Uh, no, that, this five percent was escalating from the, from right now until the midpoint of uh twenty twenty five.
Oh, he's, oh, so like, I got.
Yes, we took, we took the numbers twenty twenty three dollars.
Got it.
Yep, and, and then added an escalation factor. And that's, you know, hopefully that's the right number, but. So that's the construction cost. We obviously have project costs as well. Uh, you take the construction costs and. Uh, all of these numbers here, you can't read, um, add up to the soft costs, the, the s- stuff that doesn't. Stick to the uh building essentially, uh, fees, uh, furniture, equipment that wouldn't be part of the construction cost. Um, adding that up, um, is another uh two point seven million dollars approximately. Uh, so given a total project cost of twenty four point two uh million. Uh, then if you subtract that out from the state of Minnesota, contribution of seven point one million. The total capital cost would be seventeen million dollars. And I just wanted to point out the contingencies again that are included in here. Uh, the escalation, almost a million dollars, uh, designing, construction. Um, five percent each uh design contingency at this point, cause we're super early. Uh, another five percent during the construction, so we wanna maintain that. Um, and then the, the soft cost is about fifteen. We have a fifteen percent contingency in the soft cost. Cause we're still a little bit early, about three hundred sixty two thousand, just to protect. Uh, any missing items that weren't accommodated in this already, but.
Can you, I lost track. Does that twenty one million four hundred eighty thousand include a second story? Or is that without?
Yeah.
That is a second story.
That's the proposed site plan that you saw.
Okay.
So if we go to the next slide here. We've been talking about, we know that that's a big number to swallow. And there's some uh options that we've been kind of kicking around right now. And these are uh kind of rough estimates for what those kind of value engineering options could be right now at this time. And the three that seemed off the top that were possible, um, without a lot of pain. Uh, and still getting a lot of bang for your buck was changing that, that, that building that's next to the main building. The warehouse building from a precast building to a metal building. A little less durable, a little less able to take some water, things like that. An easy three hundred fifty thousand dollar savings, but something that's easily done. Um, taking that fifty yard range that is pretty wide right now, that's, I believe it's at sixty feet. And take it six feet out of it, changes the dynamic of the HVAC that happens. That, that part of the, the range and between that and the savings of the square footage. Uh, is a pretty decent chunk of money, uh, savings there. And still offering a wide enough range for the, the officers to do the kind of training that they wanted to. And then the two levels, uh, taking a slice out of that building. Uh, about sixteen hundred square feet each on the right hand side of the building that you were looking at. Um, just as a square foot lop off, if you will, still offers enough options for, for different types of reality based training. Almost a million dollars there. Um, some options that we talked about that maybe weren't as palatable was eliminating that warehouse building altogether. Um, at the precast cost of a million one. And then eliminating the smaller range at three million ish for that. Well, again, the concern there was accessibility, um, for folks.
We can talk a little bit about the impact on operations if you do eliminate the warehouse or if you go to just one range. What's the, can, can we use, you know, utility funds to, to pay for some of that? Because we're gonna put public work storage in there or are we not? Like what, what?
Yeah, I mean, it's also considered to be wet if and when we do the CMF expansion. That we would have space to put what's been in that warehouse there. Um, this was kind of a, if, if we don't do that.
Yeah.
Um, I'll let Chief talk about the range impact.
Yeah, that, so the range, that smaller range is obviously narrower and it's got the retriever systems built in. So that the idea, but with doing the two ranges is to, to kind of congruent training with two different groups. So if an agency's in the big range, as law enforcement, you could get three or four officers to come in and do a qualification shoot. That smaller range is really designed for stationary shooting qualifications, kind of the textbook things that we have to do to qualify. So you, you'd eliminate some of that. The, if the big range is, if there's only one range that big range is in use. None of that other training could go on at that same time. So that's the impact from an operation standpoint.
Which says, seems like, because every officer in the region is to go through qualifications every year, right? I mean, it seems like it'd be very high demand. But that would really impact the ability to actually utilize the bigger space, cause I'd imagine that the qualification stuff is a higher priority.
It is, because you have to do it every year. The other side is more discretionary.
How often do you think officers shoot on their own off duty? I'm just gonna go practice. Does that happen or is that?
This does happen. It really varies by officer. I mean, it really does. I mean, some, it's a real hobby and they spend the time and money to rent space. And pay for ammunition, go do it. Some probably don't shoot at all, outside of department shoots.
But that smaller range, something, some.
The other thing is if uh, if you wanna use the big range and you only have two, three officers, you're firing up the bigger mechanical unit. It's costing a little bit more money per shooter, if you will. Does that offset the capital cost? They're kind of two different conversations, but that's part of the theory too, is if you only have two shooters, you go to the smaller range.
What's the, what do you think is the demand long term for the reality based training that? Those sixteen hundred feet thing?
I think that's high. That's, that's one thing that's just not out. Range space is hard. There's ranges around. You can find them. You gotta drive to them and be able to book them. The reality based space is just, there's not a lot out there. And when we had our meeting, that was one of the, one of the highlights from agencies. You're saying, yeah, that's something that we just, we don't have access to. A lot of places are using abandoned buildings, homes that are gonna, going to be torn down. You're just at liberty of finding those spaces when you need them.
So and that could be, I mean, that's a value add to be enticing to other departments and agencies.
And I think that anecdotally, that's probably the second most priced thing in the building behind the range.
And we're not asking, obviously bringing decisions. We're just trying.
Yeah.
We're just showing you the exercises that we're going through to try to sharpen the pencil on us.
How does this stack up then, all those other ones that you showed us on the, on the first slide around the metro area? Would this be kind of the state of the art model of that or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it has a lot of the same components in it. I think that as we, more of these, we get better at them. So, uh, and learn more. So I would say, yeah, that's, size wise, I'd say it's a little bit of a smaller side, but not by a lot. But I think um, this site relied, needed a, a very compact linear building. Which actually is very efficient. So I think uh, that has its advantages.
With the advantage of this quality is there? I'm not saying either of this is losing all of the quality, but they have a lot of quantity too. So this site is very tight, very efficient, very quality stuff that we're trying to pack in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just wanted to go over this, um, this is how we've been kind of thinking about this and, and talking to different agencies. About how, how potential partnerships or memberships might uh occur. Uh, should somebody be interested, obviously Lakeville owner. Um, and then if there's a partner that wanted to come to the plate, uh, with either capital costs, that'd be awesome. Um, or uh, have uh, the, the second priority and, and. Really, every agency wants priority in their scheduling. That's kind of the big thing. Um, so ownership gets the first priority in scheduling, a partner second, a member third. A user kind of gets the remaining hours is kind of the theory here. Um, and that also kind of the sliding scale of what the cost might be. And these are all things that will get shaken out as time goes on. Um, but again, I think the key here is just owner, a JPA would be a partner. Or a membership, either annual or uh medium term lease, if you will. And then uh fee for service, kind of just what we're heading to here. Any questions on that?
Alright, so as Todd mentioned, last month we had a roundtable meeting. We had uh seventeen agencies, uh, not including Lakeville, at that roundtable meeting. We presented this concept and some of the features of the facility. After that meeting, we sent out a survey, monkey survey to all of those agencies and they all responded. We got seventeen responses back, which is great. Uh, and we just wanted to gauge their level of interest in being a part of this facility and using some of the components within the facility. So we started out our survey uh by asking what level of involvement they would be interested in. In regards to uh either using or being a partner in this facility. We did have one agency, uh, not including Lakeville, indicate that they wanted to be a partner. Uh, we had six say they wanted to be a member. And then we were evenly split between unsure or just a user. Uh, and it should be noted that all of this information, uh, all of these survey results are fairly preliminary. Because we're, we're at the beginning stages of the project, so don't take this to heart. This is just where we're at in, in this early.
And the agencies are a little shy about.
Yeah.
With folks, so.
So Northfield indicated they were interested in being a partner, which is great. Uh, Fairbough, Burnsville P D, Rice County Sheriff, Savage P D, Apple Valley P D, and Farmington. Fairbo, Burnsville PD, Rice County Sheriff, Savage PD, Apple Valley PD, and Farmington PD wanted to be a member. And then you see the other agencies evenly split. Some of those included fire. We had a DNR agency. They were unsure. That's kind of where we shook out in terms of the level of membership or involvement. Next, we'll jump into the components of the facility itself. So we started with the firing range. We asked Lakeville to participate in this and Jason gave us responses on that. So that's great. So. The level of use of the firing range, we chummed this into four hour sessions per year. Lakeville came in at a hundred and twenty six four hours sessions per year. And then you the members are higher numbers you see here, Savage, twenty four hour sessions per year. So we saw. A lot of interest in in the firing range itself in terms of usage. And then we wanted to gauge how big these groups would be. So we asked how many average officers would you have at each of these sessions? And it was a fairly wide range anywhere from six, although we have to Burnsville, it's a pretty large agency. They were twenty five officers per session.
I think this is kind of, we asked this question to understand how wide the range, how many lanes would be optimal. How many times people are going to have to go multiple groups to get their their agencies through.
Next, we we asked about the classrooms. We started with the forty five person classroom. Lakeville came in at three hundred times a year. So a lot of use from the city. And that's just the PD itself. So. And other agencies, it seemed to be between one and four times was was the the general consensus 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 on that. Next, we move to the seven person classroom. This, we got a lot of agencies saying they would never see themselves using it. Lakeville said they would use it five times and you have three agencies say they would use it once. Now, we asked another question and you'll slide to the next slide. We asked another question about a regional training event and. We felt like this kind of contradicted that one hundred person classroom response because. Over half of the agencies say they would consider hosting a regional training event at this facility. So kind of mixed. Mixed messages there between those two questions. It's the VR simulator that we we just spoke about. Anywhere from twice to four times. It should be noted that two of the fire agencies that actually did respond said they would never give it. So that that's kind of. How that never shook out. And then the city of Lakeville anticipated using it fifty six.
If we own it, we're using it.
This government be three hundred times a year.
Our training blocks, not the sols.
It's a little misleading. Every day except for holidays.
Had match training. Anywhere from two times to twenty times were the responses we got. We had some discussions about whether agencies were saying they wouldn't use this because they already had it in their facilities. And then Lakeville would get a lot of use out of it. Two, three times. And then the finally, the scenario village seemed pretty popular, anywhere from. Two to twenty times with the other agencies. So we got, we got a lot of good. Response and interest in this scenario village. Next, we wanted to gauge times of both year and day agencies would want this. A overwhelming majority said they want it Monday through Friday during the days. Some indicated they would like it at night and only two. Said they would be interested in using it on the weekends. I know in the roundtable meeting itself. There was an agency that said they like to have their officers train during the shift. So. Having, you know, flexibility was important. And this is about how we anticipated this would shake out, highest usage in the spring and the fall. With less usage usage during the summer.
And that's a lot to do with PTO and. Chief, if you want to chime in on this a little bit more too, but I think this goes to the multi range concept too. It's like. There's peaks in the year that it gets more usage.
Yeah, yeah, I think you know, early on, they're trying to get all the mandatory stuff in. There's a little dip in the summer with vacations and then. On schools back in session, we see, I know internally, we see a spike in our training. So it's pretty consistent.
So. The the schedule for this project, if things were moving forward, is anticipating starting, you know, right soon after this. Getting geared up for the design phase. That going through through the fall of this year. And then anticipating having bidding happening over the winter and into the spring. Did early, early February ish for the bidding phase so we could get in the ground. Running right away in the fall, get our shop drawings, lawn leats, things like that. Next page. Getting those lawn leats and things like that going, potentially even having some different packages issued earlier potentially. And then having construction start next spring. About a year of construction to April twenty sixth. And a couple of months of closeout. Project, you know, a B three state of Minnesota project requirements has some building flush out times. Usually that's a couple of months. So wouldn't anticipate if things were all this pace that. Facility could be open for agencies around July of twenty twenty six.
So during the conversation with the agencies about membership and all that, don't need to know any numbers, but was there a discussion about what potential costs could be?
Not too much, yeah, just because without knowing the total facility, it's hard to narrow it down. But I mean, that's really where everybody's landing is. How much is it going to cost people? What am I going to get out of that? That's kind of the point we're at as far as looking at members or partners and how that all shakes out.
And I I think one of the things that we saw in the feedback from the survey. Was I think agencies were pretty free to say, yeah, we think we'd use it X times. But there may be funding mechanisms or or agreements that say, you know, for a little bit more, you can use it a lot more. And and I think everyone kind of approached it as I'm just going to be a user of the facility. I'm not thinking about what it means to be a member. And so I think there that's where other conversations still need to happen. So I think our instructions to them were think about other facilities around the metro area. And what the going rate is for using those facilities and. It's going to be competitive to that.
So we we need to come up with a better name. For Lakeville Public Safety, Lakeville Regional Public Safety Training Facility is too much of a handful. And it doesn't seem like seventeen agencies want to participate. So politically.
The Hero Center.
Yeah.
Naming rights?
Yeah.
A nice seventy four?
Yeah, and yeah, the Hasi Training Facility, whatever it is, but. You know, whatever sounds politically better about how seventeen agencies are going to participate. Whomever can come up with something would be great. Maybe we'll give you. Fifty two gift cards to come up.
What about inner city agencies like SWAT? Would they use a facility like this and how would that play into?
I think some. And I think, you know, most of us are members of those inner city things. And so it's hard to really define. Probably have billing that out, right? Because we're paying SWAT dues to part of the teams. We're not going to turn around and charge them rent, but I think they'd be users of the facility. I just don't know that it'd be a revenue generator.
Seems like clearly this also the field of dreams aspect where other agencies are going to participate once the doors are open and they can. See, I mean, that seems pretty obvious based on the survey responses.
Just kind of looking around at the geographic stuff it too, it's. I don't think you're stepping on any toes really right now. By trying to open this facility. Meaning pulling from other facilities.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that Udyna project went back for bonding twice. So it's not other realm process, more money from the state.
Is there any way to gauge how much public use we could say that's going to take place in there? I mean, because we haven't surveyed or anything, gun clubs. Training for people that are. Gun. And maybe even the school district with the trap shooting people. I don't know, but. Or local districts, I should say. But is there any way to gauge the public? Interest to be able to entice the state? To know that we really are serious about. Public use and how much it would get used by the public.
Um, I I. I guess my best answer would be, I think. The more you advertise, the more you are serious about it, the more people you're going to get. I mean, that's just not saying anything.
We don't need any of that data to be able to get our money bonding wise or whatever. Guess I'm asking this kind of, but.
So any. The more hard data that we have to go. What we've heard from legislators before is, you know, as many agreements we can have in place to tell them that this is real helps, right? When we went the last time, we had lots of letters of interest that got us, I think, to the first step. I think having more. It's going to be tough to have any, but like the city council technically, you know, JPA, but I think if we hit to that next level of maybe a. Letter of intent or something like that. That would help. I will say we've spoken with on the public use. At least at the Hero Center, they have said it's a real, it's a real challenge. It's one thing to have police officers and others who are skilled and know what they're doing. They have a little more accidents, they have some public. Not to say we shouldn't do it, but I think we would try to probably limit. Which is possible.
Well, I would think that especially like if you're talking range, you're going to have somebody from the police department there.
Yeah, it'd be a staff member.
When you have fireworks and stuff.
Yeah, there would definitely be a range safety officer. That's kind of the trade off too, is. The more people you have coming, the more range officers you need to have there on staff every day. So. From a money making standpoint, I don't think you're going to make a killing doing that.
Yeah, just a real quick example. We have the JPA from the North Metro site that's in Maple Grove. And Brooklyn Park, Plymouth both did ample contributions to that. And the range of around looks to me like six hundred thousand dollars. With that, they get priority scheduling use at no cost. So. Maple Grove gets, they own it, they get first dibs, then it goes to those other cities. So. As we kind of think about structure, by my, that's why I've been looking at it to where. Go to people first and say, how much do you want to fund me up to help get us in the ground? And that's going to get you priority level for. Five, ten, fifteen years, whatever. And then that next level of investment, if you want to call it, is that membership that gets you more of like a month or a yearly fee. And I think we threw around like thirty thousand dollars or something like that. It's kind of what the chief has said they would kind of spend if we were to do this someplace else. That's what he would probably justify. You get ten of those, that's three hundred thousand dollars, that starts to get us on the low end of the operating side, right? So and that doesn't include any of the additional one offs from all the other agencies. I'm not saying we're going to break even on this. I'll never say that. But I do think that if we can get one or two good partners and then some pledged members, I think we'd be able to. Make good dent in it.
And what was our original bonding asset last year?
Fourteen. That's kind of what we were told. Now that was tied up, we didn't get into any of the detail.
Some of this is basic ask for something.
Right, yeah. So instead of. Fourteen of us mentioned and just gave us cash. So. What what kind of direction do you want from us? I mean, I'm I'm kind of. At, you know, at a minimum, I really need to figure out why the warehouse for a million dollars. So I'm just like trying to tweak around the edges on how we can make it a little bit more valuable. I'd like to not impact training if we don't have to, but there were a couple of things on there that looked like we could do some savings. A little bit. So it seemed like there was like another million and a half bucks basically that we could shave off. So.
We'll continue, I mean, we'll can if we. Kind of head nods tonight, we'll continue to refine the numbers with the daily folks internal. I think the next thing will be for us as staff to sit down and strategize about how we start to approach our partners. And with them with some firm request, because right now it's just been, hey, do you want to be here? We need to start to put some numbers in front of them, say this is what it's going to be, how much can we count on you? So I think we need to start doing that. And then you heard our legislators tonight, we need to firm up what our ask is.
Yeah, I mean, I think we asked for fourteen.
An additional?
Yeah, additional fourteen.
Why don't you just ask for the seventeen CRF?
Well, because we got seven already.
Almost twenty fourth. Like, why wouldn't you just?
Oh.
Ask for.
The difference between the two.
The whole week.
Yeah.
Before we tweak back.
Well, it was, wasn't it? It was twenty four when you edited.
Yeah.
Oh, it's twenty four.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Yes, that's going to be the twenty one number.
So I was saying, I'll ask for the whole seventeen. So. The other thing that I think of with cost too, because yeah, if we can find some places to shave, and I think law enforcement and fire agencies. Are going to be most interested in training capabilities, not necessarily. Of looks. And I think if we have to, if we can, I. Not seem like the hard pieces of design and we don't have to use stones specially harvested from, you know, highway sixty one bluffs.
It's kind of the beauty of this site is that it's an industrial area.
Yeah.
We want it to look nice as architects and be proud of it. And I think, you know, I think it's worthy of looking nice, but. Definitely it's not something we're looking to. Spend on on that.
Yeah.
Making a lot of change.
Chain is closing her ears as the zoning side of the road is.
Make it look nice about. It are.
Yeah, now like the seven hundred million dollar sit offs building.
It are the sites and stuff, but I think my point is the real values.
Yeah, for sure.
That capability.
And and a lot of these spaces are very. You're not spending money on finishes or things like that. So.
Those are going to be the things that are going to get people to sign on because they're going to go, can I get this somewhere else? Or can I build it myself? And once they realize they can't build it themselves or it's going to cost a lot of money, it's like, okay, hey, we can pay this much and be in and have some real good priority.
So what I'm hearing is. Starting to define our costs better to go out to our partners and work with our partners to figure out if there's some interest there. We look at the warehouse building as maybe a future phase. Even we keep it running with this project, but maybe it's. We have to, that can be a future phase. And then also to look at some other tweaks we can make, kind of like we've done already. And just kind of keep it running, but always have those aspects of.
Yeah, I mean, we'll know what the world, what our real financial situation.
Yeah, at the end of the day, if we need to reduce more and more, we've got those options that are designated as reduction points.
That doesn't get me my three story, four story tower. So.
We have that. It's called Able.
Yeah. Good. Yep, that's right. Keep plugging away.
Well, I appreciate the time tonight and I I think this will be able to get in front of you earlier than later.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it. Thank you guys so much. All right. Moving on to the Fire Related Association pension update and amendments and I don't.
Who's covering it from?
I'll cover it.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Komp of the Lakeville Fire Related Association and. And this is me. I have a couple of my brothers and fellow board members, second officials, treasurer Fisher. And we just want to start off by saying thank you for letting me participate in today's session. And and I don't want to make any assumptions about. Whether or not people have read the memo or how much time they've been able to spend with it yet, but. As some of you might imagine, the the planning and the process leading up to tonight's conversation and the memo that I put together was a lot different this year than. Than in years past. Um, you know, we felt that the stakes were a lot higher this year, um, emotions were. A lot more intense, and opinions on us were much more polarized. So we, we took a different approach um in preparing the memo this year. It's one that involved a lot more listening and a lot more potentialers. And really, um, more empathy, obviously. Um, I mean. Not sure if, if you've heard the quote before about fire service, but they say that we're a hundred and fifty years of tradition, unimpeded by progress. And we know literally that that's not true, but um, you know, there, there is some truth in, you know. The skepticism that a lot of firefighters, um. Things have been in the face of change, and we saw a lot of that in our conversations with our constituents, um, leading up to. Some memo this year. And I guess we weren't, you know, all that surprised with the increasing demands that the job um entails. And the uncertainty that the conversion or the transition to a hybrid department with. Uh, full-time firefighters starting here in March um entails. And, you know, also just an entirely new way of, of delivering fire and rescue services to the city of Lakeville. So, um, admittedly, there was a lot of back and forth in this process, um, and. You know, we, we, we feel really good about where we landed, you know, we, we. Wanted to present a financially viable plan, um, which we were successful in. And one that also balanced and tried to harmonize the different points of view, interests that our members had, because. Somebody that's been with the department for twenty years is obviously looking at it slightly different, somebody that just joined through fast feed. So, um, what would be most beneficial to the council? Should I cover this at a very high level and then? Dive into details, or are you versed enough in, in to just?
Firing question. I think other than Dan, we've gone through this little bit of, have you, Dan, were you here last year? Okay, so if you wanna, if you could just give a high level overview of. What it means in the vesting levels and the requests, and then also from, maybe you wanna talk about how. State has changed the address of the pension benefit levels, like twelve was the old max. Fifteen is the new max.
Sure.
Just for way of background.
Perfect, yeah, so really, um, with respect to the pension, there are two levers that we can pull to make, to influence the attractiveness of it. For our members, and those are the annual benefit level. Um, which presently in Lakeville, it's twelve thousand dollars, the state max is fifteen thousand. Um, and then there's the vesting schedule, um, and I, so long back as I, I, I know or unfamiliar with, it's been. Uh, seven years is when you can start vesting and twenty years to be fully vested in the um fire relief pension. Um, and, you know, honestly, that was the piece that was most controversial um amongst term internship. And, well, you know, s- some of our initial plans were more aggressive with respect to the vesting schedule. Where we landed in our proposal was to just true the um, the front end of it, so. Allow firefighters to start vesting at five years of service. Um, and then continue to have full vesting um occur at twenty years of service. And our proposal also does um ask for the benefit level to. Increase to that uh state maximum of fifteen thousand dollars a year.
So that, it, it says the vesting starts at forty percent, how, do you know how much the s- like steps up?
Four percent a year is.
Okay. Okay. And um, have you guys done any kind of pro forma on what the impact of the overall fund would be? These changes, do we have some?
We don't have specific dollar amounts, but we did, we, our partner, uh, Cliff and Larson Allen put together some numbers for us around these changes.
Okay.
And we're, oh, you know, we're making some assumptions on fund performance, but in the appendices, um, you'll see that. Um, even assuming a fairly modest uh year performance at five percent. Um, these changes would not drop the pension fund below a hundred and five percent funded. So that was one of the things that we were really cognizant of, is we did not want to present a plan that created an immediate liability. Um, and even if we were to um assume, you know, uh, even more modest, uh. Or quite dismal, like two percent fund performance, uh, there wouldn't be a liability created until twenty twenty-six for the city. And it would be a fairly small, I believe. Um, something to the, in the magnitude of twenty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Um, Justin, do you know about the, the formula for state fire aid, like? Is, would it escalate when we have full-time firefighters or just, that's the amount based on? Population, like, how does, I don't know anything about how that works, but clearly, like, that will have to play a role longer term and. And competing retirement plans?
Maybe Dan or Julie can correct me, as I understand it, it's based on population as well as service area, so.
Okay.
Every year, we have to turn in a form, um, and we include the contract that we have with your E E G A as a service area, and then there's some sort of formula that. Plugs into that.
And also the market value of that area, the market values is the other part of the formula.
Okay.
And we've seen pretty marked increases over the past few years in those contributions. I think last year, we were approaching six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it went up pretty substantially between the two.
So.
I think there was some one-time supplemental aid in there.
Oh, okay.
Just last year. But even before that, it didn't go up every year.
So, to answer my question, if we have full time or not, it doesn't.
I don't think it. I don't think they differentiate between.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, you would mention it briefly, I, I was just curious when I read through this. Um, because we use that aid to fund the uh, the college. But with full line, there's gonna be a state mandated contribution. To those uh lease fire pensions, so, I mean, the, the funds are gonna, gonna go to two different. Two separate places for it.
That'd be at the discretion of the council. Right now, it all goes toward here, because they're, they're, they're only ones. It has to go toward retirement for five months.
So in theory, there could be a situation where we'd have to do some phasing based on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Every other department uh that has gone through this transition has, I should say, I think, many departments that have gone through the transition. Um, have come to an agreement with the Relief Association about how those funds are.
Which that makes sense.
American, so.
Question.
Yeah.
So, in years past, um. Well, maybe the last time around, but the, the vesting uh issue has come up before as far as the years, um. Does that change when we're moving to a full-time? I mean, before it was because you wanted to entice people to wanna come in and be a firefighter. But, does, what is the rationale between the five and seven now that we're gonna be eventually moving to full-time?
Sure, I, I think it's important right now to continue to try to attract paid-on-call firefighters. This model that we're moving towards, for a lot, it, it requires there be at least fifty paid-on-call firefighters. So I think there's still a need for us to try to incentivize recruitment and retention with this pension. Um, I think, to be transparent, I think in the coming years, what the Relief Association will be. For, um, is a change to like a ten-year vesting plan for the paid-on-call pension. And that mirrors what we're seeing in Apple Valley and a lot of, you know, our neighboring cities.
Fully vested.
Yep.
To add on that from some of our conversations, the highest attrition rates are in that zero to five year range, so I think. Part of the compensation uh was. What, how can we get those two to three-year firefighters to stay? So that they, they reach that five-year point and feel more vested in the department, so that it then continues that retention. Beyond uh five years as well. Seven is a very long time, and we're losing quite a few firefighters between zero and seven.
Yeah, I think the average tenure for a Lakeville firefighter is six years. Most cases, they're seeing nothing. And the biggest investments that the department makes in firefighters is the first five years.
Were you missing anything that you guys wanted to cover?
Well, I think the only guy I would add on, so, you know, as we start to transition to full-time, um. Actually, the amount of hours that are required for the paid-on-call people, you'd think it would go down, but it's actually gonna go up. As we staff twenty-four seven, so we'll have crews, duty crews out twenty-four seven, so the. Amount of hours we're asking for our paid-on-call people, including working some overnight shifts and things like that, will go up, so as part of the reason too, I. Thought it would be a good time to come and. Bring this proposal from, from the council.
Diverses a little bit, though, Chief Meyer did say, he picked a month recently where. All the three calls overnight would have been handled solely by the full-time crew. So there would only have been three times that the paid-on-call would have been paged out overnight.
Yeah, so the, in theory, callbacks go down, which is great, you're not getting them, right, um, unscheduled. But you are still having to work those scheduled duty crew shifts for now. Hours there.
Um, other questions or thoughts?
I just, I just have a question, just not knowing how it all works and all that people. Because a firefighter, once they're vested, do they have the opportunity if they want, if they choose to, to put extra money in that?
I don't believe they have that op- opportunity, that's the point you said.
But they can roll this over to another retirement account or something like that.
Okay, so the mu- the money they have once they're vested, they could make that choice. Like to move it to a, they could roll it to a.
When they can, like retired. And that's usually what we see, they give us their information for financial.
Yeah, so. I'm fairly comfortable with the, the vesting schedule, it's something we've been talking about for quite a while, and. My hope is that it helps crack that nut of the, you know, zero to six kind of window. Um. And I'm open to, to moving the pe- the benefit levels. You know, this is the same conversation we had a couple of years ago when we went from.
And we go.
Ten to twelve, because it was this, the ma- that was the max at the time. Um, I, I'm just a little nervous because it's a big jump and thinking about. Can we meet somewhere in the middle where we phase it in to say, okay, by this date, we'll do the fifteen, so is it? The twenty twenty-six or whatever, or is it twenty-seven, depending on when this starts? Um. That would kind of just be my initial thought, but open to what others would say, but. At least to make a statement, say, yep, this is where we're going, but as we, I'm, I'm just. Still nervous about the economy, where we're having and what's gonna happen for. Your return and all those type of things, and just be able to say, okay, yeah, we can get there, but it might take eighteen months, twenty-four months instead of. You know, you're.
I could see, I could see phasing it over a couple of years and doing part of it now, and then the, the other part, once we know what the economy's gonna do. Cause it, it, it's a lot of, it's, just looking at the numbers with the number of people that are. Going to, uh, like you say, a lot drop, zero to two years, a couple of eighteen drop, zero to two. Or, no, it's eighteen. Um, but I would be in favor of just pumping it up over the course of a couple of years, maybe starting now and see how it goes.
How often does the state change the cap every two years?
I think it's every, it, it doesn't happen that frequently. I wanna say it's like every ten.
It's by legislation, um, and so it's whenever the legislator takes it up.
Yeah, I don't think it's on like a clock or anything, because I, I think if, if I remember. I might have. We raised it to ten, because that was like, they kept stepping it up there for every couple of. Local years in there, so that I can't remember.
It predates my tenure, but I, I wanna say that it's been at fifteen.
No, it's just got, it just went up to fifteen.
This is the first year.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it twelve before?
Yeah.
That's where we caught up.
Yeah, yeah.
It was at twelve for a while.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, because the twenty.
We went to, I wanna say we went, don't hold me to it, but. We went to the max pretty quickly after it got there. Um, maybe not ten, the ten might have been there for a while.
The ten was there for a while.
Basically, once it went up to twelve, I think we got.
Yeah, we went from ten to twelve in one year.
My concern, I, I understand your concerns.
Yeah.
And the uncertainty with the market, but uh, I do think it's a, a really critical time. You know, in the, for the state of the department, for us to um. Seriously consider the move to fifteen, because I do think attrition is at risk. I think this, this would send a right statement that the city is fully in support of the paid-on-call staff. And I think it will retain people that are both long-tenured and, and motivate people to stay on that are more recently joining.
Even doing fifteen hundred this, this year and fifteen hundred next year, I don't think it'll have the impact that we're hoping.
Yeah, I think this year, just the full-time change, um, and then the, the demand, everything that's coming with it. Um, is gonna ask a lot of our department. Um, the callbacks and stuff that we see from the uh fire department, the callbacks in the middle of the night, we aren't getting those. A lot of those ten-year guys or, you know, those guys that we might be seeing that. And the twenty-year, that, you know, soon, we're getting the young guys to go to those overnight. We're gonna get to a point where we're gonna ask everybody now to um. Get away from their families in the middle of the night for eight hours and sleep at a fire station to do those overnight calls. But right now, firefighters have the ability to uh roll over on those overnight calls if they don't wanna wake up. Or they don't wanna spend time with their family. So these increase of duty crew hours are only taking firefighters more away from their families. In, in that sense, right, because you're doing shit work. Uh, so I think, you know, saying, you know, fifteen hundred dollar a year, uh, for some of those guys that are, are at their. Breaking point or just enough, right, um, their families can be saying enough's enough. So we, you know, if we don't get enough for those guys, there's a good chance that a lot of those firefighters are just saying enough's enough. And we drop down below fifty in a matter of instant here. And six firefighters isn't gonna solve a full-time apartment without.
How would five and the six come from? Really, we're gonna create our own attrition, we're probably saying, huh?
First year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or in that eighteen within three years, so. At least that's the.
And as I understood Chief Meyer's comments, um, fifty is still that number at eighteen. So, you know, we're, if it, if it were to drop, you know, immediately year one, we're fighting an uphill battle. Right out of the chute.
Well, and that was one of the reasons I was more comfortable with. Proposal was because what's not factored in here is that decrease down in terms of how it's impact on the fund. But as you are getting fewer and fewer paid-on-call and it's kind of stealing through yourself to, for the full-time. Uh, department, for example, we just hired uh an inspector who didn't get his pension because. He didn't meet that threshold, I think, he's in about two, two or three years.
He's four or three, yeah.
Four, so he, he's still a few years out, and so those dollars, the liability was in there, but he didn't receive those. Dollars out, um, so to me, worst-case scenario is a fairly low risk. Um. Understand the, the desire uh to potentially phase us in. I, the council went that direction, I would hope that it would be a short-term phase of, you know, fifteen this year, fifteen next year. But the way the numbers look to me comfortable, they're going up right away. Alright. Others?
You got it.
Joshua, I'm comfortable with that as well. Up right away.
Great. Sure.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that, I just, so. I'm fine with the five-year versus the seven, that helps. Probably, it's a little harder to swallow for me to go from twenty to ten, but. Figure it out when the tide comes, um, but, but, um. So, yeah, I'm fine with the recommendations they brought forward. Mike, I have a question, that's a. Related to Fire Back to this right here, so I'll wait till we come up with your consensus.
Okay. Um, well, it sounds like we do have consensus on the five years and certainly a majority that want to go to the fifteen. Based on the recommendation side, that would be my recommendation to staff is to go with what you guys proposed.
Appreciate that. And would this then be eligible to per consent agenda at next council meeting? It's timing, the timing element is obviously. Really important with the full time, I believe, starting first week of March, it gets the anticipated structure.
So, um, I promise I'm not trying to argue against you guys, I just have a job here, um. Going into the fifteen is fine, it'll be really hard to advocate having the vesting schedule to ten years if you do this. It'd be really detrimental to the fund, um, and it would be putting the city at a pretty big risk. So just prepping you all as you go back and tell your.
Appreciate that.
I would. Think very hard about coming back with that recommendation.
Great, thanks for the feedback.
Okay.
And I guess just in closing, if I could make a last comment, I did want to offer a special thanks to Councilwoman Lee and Mr. Miller for their. Added involvement and any feedback throughout this process, I really hope.
Okay, thank you guys, we appreciate it. As always, appreciate you taking your time with your families, much as you do. Not just tonight, obviously, these are easy ones that probably compared to the three AM ones.
You something to be here?
Yep.
Oh, we're onto how you're, did I just ask?
Yeah.
So people out there?
Yep.
So because of the, the number of hours that have increased on the medical call service areas, et cetera. Is it possible that we could look at an avenue that? Maybe we can garner back some of the expenses to that, I, I mean, I'm not really sure all the causes that, and why. It keeps escalating, so is there a way that we can look at, that the city can look at, uh, exploring? Um, what we can actually charge an insurance company for some of those, there's got to be. Some ways maybe to recoup some of those costs if you guys are interested in the city looking into that, I'm just thinking. You know, there might be an opportunity that we garner. Monies through the year, I mean, I realize that would be a billing, but we'd have. Somebody would have to be billing for it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um.
It would pay for itself.
I think that's part of the conversation about franchise fees and, and how those impact more broadly across the. Tax spectrum. That we're going to have.
Billing an insurance company would be a franchise fee?
No, but just that could be part of the conversation right about franchise fees and how we potentially could pay for. Fire station.
Well, I'm still just trying to figure out why, I, I'm trying to figure out the system. Why, over the years, the medical keeps going up and up and, you know, and so. And, and the population, the medical calls are going up higher than the population.
So.
So there isn't any correlation there, and so it's costing. It's causing more demand on the fire department and the call on duty, you know, all of these things. And I'm just looking at a way to garner more revenue for the fire department.
Right, and what you're talking about is starting to be a major, uh, roadblock at the cap, but we had a conversation about it at our MLC meeting. And that is how, it's a fight really between potentially us and hospitals, because they're the ones getting paid, you know. They, ambulances get paid by bringing them somewhere, there's no incentive to actually fix somebody on site. Fix them, do you know what I mean? The incentive is to actually take them to the hospital, so there's a broader conversation happening at the state level on what the future. At least on the medical side looks like, we used to talk about billing insurance companies for. That, it's, it's the relationship with the hospital and the rig, if you will. And there's all these task forces, just like my council, there's task force and legislators.
So even if you broadened the billing to, um. Help recoup some of the costs of the mental health needs to, the other spectrum of services that are being provided in the home. Um, I, I don't know, I'm.
Yeah, no, in theory.
It's something that we can investigate whether or not.
I mean, that's my hope that as we continue to have a conversation about moving to full time, what, what is our relationship with our ambulance service look like? Uh, and then are there going to be changes at the state level, but. You can bet that the hospitals are going to fight that, I mean, that's their, that's a major revenue driver, so it's just part of the problem.
And I think as long as the city is only providing ELS services, non-transport, no ALS, it's going to be awfully hard to get a meaningful recoup. Services and fire billing, you know, some cities do do it, but it's rare and it doesn't create a ton of revenue.
There's certain type of coding. Well, I mean, it's good to investigate it, I'm just not sure.
They can provide some background on.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Patrick. Um, do we want to take a quick five minute break before we dip our toes in the hot pool here or? Okay, we'll just take five minutes.
Yes.
I didn't ask, I assume that's awesome.
Yeah.
No.
So we'll move on to, uh, our cannabis zoning discussion, something we've kind of brought up in the past. Um, I, I know we have two folks here that if you want a way and just, you know, give me a signal, we'll kind of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have your way if you want, or not, that's fine too, but.
Or if you have any questions.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. Um, so I don't know, Tina, are you going to kind of kick this off?
Yep, I'll jump in, um, I'll try to kind of cut to the chase here of what we're trying to, um, continue the conversation. We did a, I think a couple of months ago, an attorney from Campbell Knudsen talked a little bit about the new law. Um, we all know that the Office of Cannabis Management, um, will begin licensing. You know, originally, the thought process was as early as next January. I'd be shocked if it was then, um, they're still working on, um, staffing and even getting a director for that department. Um, but they'll be in charge of all of the licenses, so that would include the commercial growing, any processing, as well as the retail sales. Um, they're also going to be responsible for preparing model ordinances, so anything that we prepare, um, early this year. Ahead of the model ordinances might have to be tweaked, we just kind of want to make the council be aware of it that, you know, we can do our best. Trying to deal with all of the potential, um. Issues that we might need to include in the ordinance, but without that model ordinance. Might have to do some tweaks and that department is just way behind. Um, but anyways, they, um, if you read the statute, there's about. Dozen or more, there's twelve different types of licenses, so going through that. Um, staff will have to make some, uh, do some more work to really understand all those different types of licenses and try and figure out and plug those into different zoning districts. So what we do know though is that. The Office of Cannabis Management or OCM will be responsible for the licensing, we're responsible for the registration. So if a business has a valid license, we must issue the registration. State statute does say, um, that from a retail standpoint, we must allow one registration per twelve thousand five hundred. Residents, so for Lakeville, that means up to six registrations from retail standpoint or the, um, dispensary standpoint. Generally, municipal regulations are preempted, we don't have a lot of control over this ordinance. Or the statute or the implementation, however, we do have a role when it comes to zoning, although that role is still a little bit limited, but we can. Determine time, place and manner of operation, so some of the things that the statute does allow. Um, are some specific setbacks that we can do, we don't have to, but we can implement some setbacks. That includes a thousand feet from a school, five hundred feet from a daycare and a residential treatment facility. Um, or an attraction in a public park, so basically any park that has a playground. Like, um, play field, things like that, we can add a restriction to that, so remember five thousand feet for school. Five hundred feet daycare and park. Again, these limitations are an option, but not a requirement. So what we really need to do is start thinking about that and think about the different types of licenses that we're going to have, and I'm generalizing them in this memo to. Basically, things that come around growing it, cultivating it, creating it. Manufacturing it into, you know, gummies versus just the, the flour. The distribution of the product and then the actual sale of the product, so I kind of divided up between kind of the whole. What you would think of a manufacturing process compared to a retail process. So when you think of our zoning district, our I one and our I two district allows for any kind of manufacturing process, you know, product. I don't really see, um, cannabis as much different from that. Um, folks are going to be looking for a location where they might be able, they might want to grow it, it's largely going to be interior. Um, it could just exist right in a warehouse building with pop up greenhouse. We might be asked to consider an actual greenhouse structure, you know, a glass walled structure, that's something that we will need to spend some time on. Retail sales or the dispensary. Could be looked at as any other kind of retail use and our C one, um, our C two, which is the highway but commercial district, C three general. Um, and then there is the downtown or the C CBD, Central Business District, um, the downtown zoning district. But a dispensary would be considered more of a retail use, very similar to a liquor store. Um, again, considering those distance limitations, we did prepare a couple of maps. Um, this one is with all of the restrictions, and again, this is a moving target. Depending on licensing for childcare centers, so this is kind of worst case. The gray is the coverage area where a dispensary or other kind of licensed use would not be allowed. So then when I flip to the next map, um, the next map doesn't include any of the daycare, so you'll see some lightening in some area where the gray is removed. But it's not, it's a little dramatic, but not real dramatic of a change, you can definitely see the difference. Having these two maps is important when I dig into what the Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission shared. We talked to the Planning Commission, same memo that's in front of you. Um, talked about the difference between what could occur in an industrial district compared to a commercial district. And the Planning Commission first started talking, you know, we should include all of the restrictions to start. Because it's easier than to peel back those layers than adding them into the ordinance. And then the conversation kind of shifted where they started going down the road of, well, how is this any diff? Thinking just through retail, how is it any different than our liquor store, and we don't have any distance limitations with our liquor stores? And so their recommendation at the end was to go with the second map. Add just schools and, um, the parks, but not include the daycares. The Economic Development Commission had very similar conversations and the Planning Commission did talk about this too in terms of ventilation. Both on an industrial building as well as in a retail, we don't want to have someone operating a dispensary in a retail setting where. You will be able to pull out the product, somebody will be able to smell the product, you can't use the product in the store, but you can have it. Um, pull it out, let someone smell it, so there could be some scent and odor that gets out. Um, we'll have to deal with some requirements regarding ventilation in any scenario, and the EDC talked about that a lot. And then in the end, they did recommend all the restrictions, again, the logic, the logic with the EDC was we can pull. Back these layers if we need to, um, so that's, this is the map they preferred. So really what we're here this evening to talk about is what are you all thinking? Um, again, we're kind of dividing a lot of those license types into kind of the industrial area and the retail area. Um, we're going to have to really dig into the various license types and how those, um, might fit in, but just an example from the statute. Um, there'll be a license for cannabis cultivator, cannabis manufacturer, cannabis retailer, wholesaler, transporter. Such as testing facility, delivery facility, um, and then you have some of the same under the medical definition. So again, considering that division, um, some of the questions that we have tonight is. How do you see dividing of these uses, this is something that you would want to see as a permitted use versus a conditional. I think a conditional coming right out of the chute would probably be smart because we will have standards by which a business is going to have to operate under. Does the council want to distinguish between zoning districts, do you want to allow retail in all the commercial districts, do we want to talk separately about downtown? And then does the council feel, um, strongly about all the distance regulations and some of the distance regulations? Those are the kinds of conversations we want to start having, so we can start piecing some ordinances together.
So I, my suggestion would be we should have a conversation about retail first, separate from like the manufacturing, just because it's. So different, because I think in general we're going to be confining the manufacturing to. Industrial use versus.
I think it's easier to, Columbo versus.
Yeah, that's, that is.
So the question I have is about the retail, yes. Um, is there separate licenses for that, because some retail will be, hey, I have cannabis for sale. Some retail is that my, Meyer is saying that, hey, this is a cannabis bar. You can come in and you can smoke the cannabis here, I mean, is there a distinction between those two things or the same thing?
There probably is, and again, I'm not an expert with the statute, I've read through once.
If you. The gentleman is back, probably some more expertise.
Going for a strict retail, not a cannabis bar, um, and the state hasn't really flushed that out, I don't think, what their plans were. If you read the bill, it's two hundred thirty some pages, very little actual detail. The Department of Health and the Office of Cannabis Management are in phase four of their rulemaking currently, I believe, where they're taking input from the registered hemp. Uh, licensed, which includes Steve and myself. Um, businesses and, and other stakeholders in those communities and. Um, those are happening to via internet surveys, but I don't think any of those rules are flushed out yet, but like Stephen said. You've got the complexities of, you know, not only retail license, but micro business and mezzo business, which include retail locations, but would also include. Limited amounts of vertical integration, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong too, though, um. And this was kind of my point to Doug earlier, because he asked about tweets, right now, it's only where everything is prepackaged, they're not like opening and smelling, so like the retail setting in theory. Should have a lot less odor component compared to manufacturing.
I can't speak for Kyle, but in my business plan and budget, there is, uh, um. A mitig- odor mitigation system, the charcoal, and, um, I've shared that with our landlord too, and so that's part of it.
But that's not required in state law.
I, I believe it is if you're attached to, if you've got neighbors on either side and we didn't want, uh, that smell going. I, I like that we're next to a coffee roaster, that smells delicious, and when Pippy Goose does their bacon, love that, but. No one wants to have the smell of, uh, weed, and so, um. I believe when it comes packaged to us, that's going to take care of a lot of the odor. I don't believe we're able to open it up and share with, yeah, that's like, uh, an Oregon thing, but that's not the way other, like Illinois.
Yeah, I was recently in Nevada for a national convention in the marijuana industry, and the way it's done in most states is that you enter, and there's a vestibule. You present your government issued ID and you get checked in in a system called metric. And then you enter the retail portion where you're actually doing the physical shopping, they show you whatever they've got, you make your decision. They punch it into a computer and then someone in a completely separate room, uh, prepares that order, that area has to be, it'll be vaulted. It'll be, it has to have electronic security, um, and then you will, uh, the people in the back will prepare that orders. They'll, it'll be attached to that person, uh, metric tracks both, it's basically like a pharmacy system where it tracks patient and doctor, you know. Using general terms here, but, uh, and then that gets passed through. The pass through portion back to the retail spot where the cashier will have to, in Nevada anyway. It has to be in an OPEC bag with a child from Zimber and it has to be order free or order, uh, dampening. And then you hand it to the customer, the customer's not allowed to, like, I mean, you open to verify, but it has to remain shut till they exit. Out of a separate exit, and that I believe is how we're working with some. I'm working with a, an agency that, that does consulting and has lobbyists in the state, they're kind of telling me that that's the direction we're probably going in, so.
Okay, so, but that is none that's been flushed out yet, because there's no, that's all rulemaking stuff?
Correct, but I believe that's the direction that Minnesota will be going in. That's.
My word of caution is, I want to say, yeah, we're, we're broadly speaking on these things. And, you know, wanting businesses, but. We're going to want to have some tightening on certainly ventilation, for instance.
Yep.
Uh, and, and however we write this, I think the zone has one, but our. And in however we write this. So I think the zone has one, but our, that's why I think your point about conditional use so that we can answer a lot of these, you know, I mean, if they can't even hire a commissioner for goodness sake. We just don't wanna put ourselves out and say, no, under any circumstance, you can just open a store without having some, that's my my funny daddy response, I guess.
As I read through, the condition just jumped out. And, I mean, to your point, this isn't hashed out yet. I mean, that sounds like quite a process to sell, you know, a substance. So we'll see if Minnesota ends up like that. In terms of the map, I think I'm most in favor of what doesn't cause confusion. And I think if you do the parks and the schools, I would take the recommended thousand feet. The daycares, I'm not so sure of the impact that any of these places would have on the daycares. And there's, you know, a new daycare comes up and it's within five hundred feet my place, but I was when we built it, then you have that question. So for the map, I'm, I'm most in favor of the recommended thousand feet in the schools and playgrounds or parks that kids would.
To the EDC's recommendation with this, how how you pull that back though? I mean, you can't, you do that on a one-on-one basis or case-to-case basis. We typically have not, we try to make it, you know, clear and clean for everyone without having to make exceptions. So how do you do that if this is the map? It's, well, covers a lot of the retail areas.
Yep, I think, I'm not entirely sure. I think by pulling back, I think they, they mean, let's start with all of the restrictions. And then if, for instance, if we don't have enough areas or six because of the coverage, we may then tweak the ordinance and pull back and not include daycares. But then there would be some stores that did comply with the more restriction.
Is that what the minutes, I don't remember that's how the conversation went, but EDC, I thought they were okay with what the planning commission said on daycares.
Some of them were. The majority, the way I took it, again, it was a very informal conversation, but the way I took it at the end is they wanted to have all three, daycare, schools, parks, and then pull back if we needed to. Wasn't majority, but that, you know, or supermajority, but it was more than them than not.
They, and they thought that that would be productive for economic development by adding more restrictions.
They definitely approached it more conservatively. Some of the planning commissioners suggested no restrictions because we don't for the liquor stores. But then others kind of pulled them back. So I mean, it, you know, I didn't, I didn't do a poll.
Or if there wasn't a concern that if you it was the impact to other businesses, I think.
And if, and if you, if all of a sudden you're having impacts, you have people that invested in their stores and now you want to pull back and they want to invest in that area that now isn't a gray. So it's almost a reverse impact on. If we keep it tight, have all three entities be regulated or all three areas be regulated. And in the future, we start getting more and more requests of, hey, we wanna be in these areas that are close to daycares. Then that usually triggers planning commission to say, okay, there's some market out there or there's a change here that we need to consider. I mean, that's how they typically operate in the past. They don't, what they don't wanna have happen is people start locating in those areas that are close to daycares and all of a sudden it's a problem. And now those people have already invested in those spaces. And then what do you do? Would you wanna then regulate them at that space?
But if you look at this map, the yellow dots are the daycares, the family, the in-home behavior, basically, right? We're not gonna allow this, I assume you're not gonna allow this in residential zoning anywhere. So, I mean.
Here's, here's my.
You're not, you're not free, the, the area that you're freeing up in this would be downtown, basically, because of what's the name of the one downtown?
High Point.
High Point, yeah. That, at least as I look at it.
Yeah, I mean, my, my take is just in general, daycares can be more transitory. Schools are institutions, they're not going anywhere. And I would hate to say, you know, you get in a situation where you do daycares and then you have one closed and then that's, could you then have something there? I mean, it's, does it need to be that dynamic? And I, I don't think it needs to be. So I'm less concerned about including daycares.
Well, I, okay, so I'm maybe stupid, but I can't figure out even what the differences between a school and a daycare in this establishment. So the kids are bussed or they walk home, I guess, in a school. Daycare's, kids are always picked up cuz they're little. So I can see, you know, not eliminating the daycare as part of the strategy. But we already don't allow it in the parks, so I'm not really sure why we have to worry about being close to a park. And as far as the schools, it's a contained environment too, except if you were gonna say the high schools or something. I don't know. I can't figure out how the schools and this business are going to be a problem when they can go when tobacco's sold at every store in the world. And so I, I just don't, I don't see it. I don't see the protection level that's needed.
Well, I also don't have, I mean, there's very few commercial areas that are impacted by the schools. It's more the daycares. I mean, other than the, the part of Bigville, North Hurst, right, and Heritage, United Christian and Catholic. Okay, yeah, so that's, yep.
And again, these limitations are a choice. It's not a mandate. It's an option.
Choice too. I agree. I mean, look at that, the parks are all residential areas except for maybe two.
The distances are.
Well, the hilarious thing about the parks is it actually excludes us if we ever got into the cannabis business because you're talking about heritage and you're talking about galaxy.
Good same place.
Right, yeah, right.
I've, so.
So you're saying none?
I, I'm, I'm good with nothing.
So you're saying none?
Yeah, I'm saying just the schools.
Schools.
I, I mean, I even go with just the schools. I mean, I said parks and schools too, but, you know, you can't smoke it in the parks anyway. And I'm not sure what effect it has. So I could, I could go with just schools.
Man, I guess I'm thinking, what's that park that's north of Ohio? Is that Dodge Trail Park? There's a corner of that little commercial that would be impacted, right? And then.
Cedar and Dodd, because you have, that's the big one, the.
Yeah.
Christian Heritage County. Christian Heritage County, that takes out all the crossroads pretty much.
Okay, but that, the other question I just asked was, I mean, we're assuming a thousand feet too. That's the maximum distance away from.
It could be eight hundred feet.
Yeah, or five hundred or.
How far away is McGuire JFK downtown?
Oh, it's thousands of feet.
It's thousands. Okay, see, I, I have no conception of distance. I apologize, but I really don't. I mean, if somebody tells me a mile, it still seems a lot, you know, so I have no conception of distance.
Well, you can kind of tell by the circle there. I mean, it goes across two-tenth.
This is McGuire.
Oh, yeah.
And then it's thousand feet from this.
I hope, but then what about, there's that strip mall over there or whatever, so does it get affected?
So that's picked, yeah, that's, that's covered in the gray.
And somebody explained to me why the schools, I mean, what are you worried about?
It's what the state put in. We're just saying what the state is allowing.
No, I'm talking about my fellow council members. They're, you know, they're saying the schools, but what do you, what are you worried about? What, what's different between the schools and a liquor store and the schools than a cannabis dispensary?
Um, I, to be honest, I mean, I, I would wanna talk to the school district about if they were concerned or not. I mean, that's, it'd be more of a question just to have with the.
I also don't buy the liquor store comparison since we've got municipal liquor. I mean, if this, we're talking about private. So I would see.
Right, for sure. Yeah, I mean, if we had, we had as many liquor licenses as Burnsville, I would feel way different about I mean, they have ten or eleven or whatever their numbers.
Okay, but, but what is about the schools that you wanna include it? What is it about it?
I think it's the perception of access and the potential to buy something and have, and provide access to other kids in the schools.
Even with the age restrictions?
I mean, I think it, it's probably not as big of a concern if we've got legitimate businesses. But we also have illegitimate businesses running right now. I don't know what kind of our SROs, what their thoughts are on use in the schools, drugs in general. But I, I think the policy is more about perception than it is maybe about a-actual access of high schoolers or middle schoolers to THC cannabis. I, I mean, I think there are some areas where it's the schools are creating kind of too much restriction. I would, I would wanna look at the distance and not just assume a thousand feet.
Yeah, do we have a, a map that shows five hundred versus a thousand?
I can, we can get one of them.
So seeing, we, we come to consensus about the daycare situation. And now it's a matter of.
The parks too, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I. Yeah, so really we're talking about, so I think that's fine. I think the school thing is it's on, need to provide a conversation with the superintendent or Justin maybe to just, if they care at all. I don't, I, I don't know.
Yep, we can do another math that includes five hundred feet.
Okay.
Is there any concern over the various resident or retail zoning districts? You know, from C two, C one neighborhood business to C two, C three is the more general. And then downtown. Be concerned of looking this as, this as any other retail business?
I don't.
I don't think so, no.
What can a tobacco place currently be? Same, all three C districts?
You like the idea of a COP?
Yeah.
Again, we're way ahead. And I understand, my understanding is the council's really trying to get our arms around where we think we wanna have these establishments so that when people do call, we can guide them towards that, whether it's on the books or not. Concern I have is everything these gentlemen just shared about how a facility will operate. They may have purview to how the, the mashing of the, you know, the rulemaking's happening. We at the city level, we're not getting that from OCM. So we don't have that model ordinance in front of us. So we can attempt to try and create and include this so that the messaging is in our ordinance is that people understand. Yep, you can do the cultivation, the processing and so forth in the industrial districts, get that on the books, knowing that we're gonna change it. Or we can pause, wait a few more months, see if any rulemaking comes out. Where is your thought process on that?
Couldn't we, if we, if we just designate that it's industrial, but all those things that we're talking about, can't that be part of the conditional use process?
We just may not cover everything.
I don't see us granting it to anybody because there is nothing, right?
It'll just be whether or not you're comfortable with people making investments. I mean, we've had this discussion, right? That people are signing leases or buying land.
I think if we're upfront, we don't know. The, the state hasn't made their decisions yet. They haven't, you know, issued any licenses. We don't know what those look like once they're issued. And, you know, I don't know if we need to figure out if there's just a standard conditional use. For me, it would be things like odor control and stuff like that.
Yep, we can start with that and include as many standards as we think and then add, you know, you know, we'll be learning and evolving as we go through this. But I agree with you. You know, I get phone calls, I get people wanting to meet, they're interested in Lakeville or various parts of the business. We need to be able to be responsive to that. And many cities aren't. They're just holding back, waiting. So I think if we're out in front of it, it puts us in a good position for these businesses.
At one point, we had talked about our desire wasn't to limit the overall number in the city. I don't know what mechanism there is to do that.
We have to allow at least, from a retail standpoint, at least six based on the population.
But that was county-wide.
No, that's just the city.
There is a number county-wide, but it's greater than. We have to allow six unless the county itself has one per that twelve thousand five hundred.
Four year or something.
So West Saint Paul again and Alamo Valley, get forty applications before we get one. Theoretically, we could deny it.
Now, we could swear at six, cap it.
Oh, we can do that.
If there's interest in that.
Not by me, but that's all right.
Yeah, that would have to be part of.
Yeah, I'd like to, I thought we decided that.
So if, if I remember right, the conversation was that in each of our retail hubs trying to manage the number to kind of one per hub. That's how I remember the conversation.
Yeah.
But that was.
The distance requirement between.
Yeah.
Between stores.
Right.
You can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't flush that conversation out. I just.
We had talked about it.
Sometimes, the, depending on where they are, the landlords take care of that.
They do.
Because they have no Mexican, one Mexican restaurant per strip mall.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the market is gonna tweak some of this. I mean, what I've heard, what the drive is considering at Mystic Lake is like the Mall of America, pot. So, you know, at some point, like, how many, how many mom and pop stores are actually gonna thrive? I don't know. So I think putting it's.
It's gonna be hard to run one.
Yeah.
Well, I think we got in some direction. We'll slow play it a little bit until the model ordinance has come out, but we'll at least be in direction.
Yep.
True.
So is there sense, I mean, maybe Steve, Kyle, maybe you know, that we're gonna see rules before there's an agency hit? The point like the, the middle-level management is working on this or something? What's the?
Maybe appointed advisory boards, members to cover various things, including enforcement. I heard last week that they were trying to push the licensing timeline forward for cultivators, growers, and managers, yeah, expediting it. You may see people approaching you folks within the next, you know, eight months.
Create a supply chain before they start retails.
Yeah, and it's the six-month growing, drying and then testing. You know, obviously, in the wintertime, it all have to be indoor and roll. But Steve is talking about moving it up for, just for cultivators, farmers. I might just add too that when the license application comes out, Kyle and I will have to submit our location and the safety plan for the space. And so that's one of the reasons we're very interested in knowing what the zoning's gonna be if we're investing and having an architect fill it out and that sort of thing, so. So thank you for your consideration. Yeah, thank you.
Dispensary is the only thing that there's kind of the mandatory minimum on?
Dispensary is the only thing that there's kind of the mandatory minimum on.
Good. Good direction.
Thanks.
Good. Thank you guys for coming too. Um, okay, moving on, I think we're just on updates, right? All right, it should be discussion, anything?
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we need the city administrator. I'll just, I've got one and it's, this is from kind of our last. Work session, uh, Justin and I went to the CDAs where the mayor manager meeting last week was held at the county CDA and talked a lot about housing. And one of the things that I learned, and maybe you knew this, is that the money can basically be used for everything. The end goal is some sort of housing component. We, if we have like a tough site that needed some infrastructure or tear down a building or something that then results in. Housing, for instance, we can use that money.
Yeah, but not any housing.
Yeah, sorry, under, under the portal, yeah, we can't tear down. Whatever that bookmarked, but. Um, so that was interesting.
You can't put a dorm in the public safety.
No, we can't. No, we can't. But, um. So that, it was, it was interesting. I think the, the big number, the big two numbers, um, that I thought were intriguing that I also did not know. There's a thousand seniors right now in the county waiting. For, you know, the apartments that are offered by CDA, which to me is like. Down effect on, you know, if you're, if you're able to live in a county property, you're not in a four hundred or five hundred thousand dollar home right now. And so in theory, we should be creating. Single family or even duplexes by solving that nut. So that was part of that. And they said there's three thousand families trying to get into the town home program. Or I don't know if it's three thousand people or three thousand families.
People, I think.
People, okay, so it might be less family units, not.
But those people. Three thousand names.
Okay.
That it could be a household, it could be a single.
Okay, okay. Um, and they expressed interest in, in partnering with. The different entities about what that would be. And they also shared, they had four different kind of pamphlets on programs that would qualify that are currently things that they operate, whether it's. Weatherization. You know, some of those kind of like preservation things. They would just wanna know from cities, like if you wanna put a bunch of money into weatherization, for instance, we need to staff up for it. So you need to have a. You can't just like say, oh, this year you're gonna dump the money in there because you don't know what to do with it. So we'd have to have that conversation. My, my just message to us in the room would be. You could see heads nodding from other mayors. There, and at some point, the CDA is stretched thin. So the, the more willingness for us to say, yeah, we wanna partner on a senior apartment building. And getting to the front of the line, so to speak, the better, otherwise we might end up not getting. But they're just, they're stretched thin, you know, and they don't have the staff.
Thousand was in Lakeville or the.
Dakota County.
Was in Dakota County, so we don't know what, what Lakeville's waiting list is.
Uh. Yeah, I mean.
Don't have to live in Lake. If they build in Lakeville, they won't.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It does.
It's payback.
It only matters to me the fact that I wanna make sure our citizens.
Yeah, I mean, so.
They need it, so.
Josie's grandmother lived in those buildings. She was in Rosemont, Hastings, Farmington. I think she was smart enough to get on the waitlist when they're building new ones, so she booked in a new apartment in three years.
Okay.
So, yeah, it doesn't, you just have to be.
Does it have to be a whole CDA building or what about, you know?
Sixty-eight percent AMI type.
So, uh.
So handy prep.
Yeah, so we could do a mix. And again, the money, so let's say. We had a building in downtown Lakeville that we don't love where a US federal entity works in. We could raise that building, create some commercial, and then have housing above it, as, let's just say, as an example. Percentedly, you'd have to say, okay, the housing money went to pay for the infrastructure for the three levels of housing. And then a, a private entity would have to pay their portion for the level. So that's how into the, and that was the other thing is. His, Tony's message was, that's the interpretation today. The state is going to at some point realize that this was like the Wild West and they're gonna have to dial it down a bit. So we're gonna have the most flexibility. Over the next eighteen, thirty-six months versus five years from now, so. It was good information and I think we need to have a conversation about, you know, what we wanna do. Cause at the end of the day, I mean, the amount of money in five years, we're gonna be having. Six hundred thousand a year.
Yes.
So I mean, you can bond for a decent senior apartment building. Or, you know.
Pay the debt.
Or, yeah, or, you know, put it into weatherization and preservation and those things too, but. And those are easier just because the programs exist. So my, my message back is, I wouldn't recommend us standing up a weatherization program or, uh. You know, you'd wanna just partner with the county on that. But a surprisingly small number of people even do it. I think last year. You know, it was like twenty-four properties or something.
Well, we don't have a ton of money. I mean.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't take much to.
Use the.
New windows or furnace or things like that. It needs it up great.
So, anyway.
Well, it's not highly advertised, right?
Well, it gets used up. I mean, our money that we give to the county for.
Okay.
Their CDBG, it's.
Yeah, there's, there's probably a good chance if you're in kind of that, if you're getting WIC or SNAP or something, you're gonna get. Targeted for those type of programs.
So you have somebody that's working with you, like a social worker, helping.
A lot of persons.
Getting all the resources available for them, okay.
Uh, just a reminder that Thursday is dementia-friendly communities pick up two PM at the Heritage Center. Uh, Representative Cosmic and I will just kick it off and then it's gonna be a, the dementia-friendly community program. Presents these hour-long, uh, dementia information programs. And the idea is that we continue to do these in the community and so the community becomes aware what dementia looks like, what you could do and can you see it and encounter it. It, I think it ties right in with the senior population and the elderly people and it's not everybody's elder. It's gonna be a good effort. Uh, if you can't make the twenty-fifth, we're gonna have a session on Saturday, the twenty-seventh. And, uh, Fulton Zappa was on intending, you know, same thing will be in the post session. Uh, so I'd love to see as many people as possible there. The idea is to just make Lakeville a dementia.
For the sake of quorum, I, I was planning to go on Thursday. I don't know if anyone else. I'll be grabbing so I can. So I'm gonna have three or four of them.
Do you have to worry about it for a social event?
Sounds like it doesn't matter.
No.
I have an ALF meeting on Thursday. So that'll be interesting. It's, it's only my second time going to a meeting, um, so there was a nice presentation last year. But having been to the MLC meeting, learning a little bit more about just the regulatory firstments. There's a lot to wrap your head around, um. And they say their service is great, but, um.
Well, here. That's fine. But they're bringing to a place where the emergency department at Fairview is overrun. So if you could try to limit the amount of people that are going to. Fairview Rouge, that would be great.
But, you know, to your question about, uh, our medical call increases. And I was noticing in the report about how much. Your calls, ALF is called in Lakeville, and just the response time being greater. So clearly that means they're sitting somewhere else. And I don't, I don't know what the call volume is, um, based on the report, but I don't know, just, it doesn't all add up, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't worry about that.
Uh, then I will take.
Great smile.
Take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Like I said.
I was a favorite.
I had a post. Just want something to say.